We'll call the meeting to order. Um, have we any updates to the agenda?
Uh, good morning, Council. Administration has no updates to the agenda. However, I believe the Deputy Reeve, uh, has requested to remove Agenda Item I-1 from the agenda, and I will let Deputy Reeve speak to it.
Deputy Reeve Shul.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to delete I-1. I don't know if I need a reason for it, but if you want to, I will give a bit of a reason. Oh. Okay, right, ah, new technology. Uh, to remove Item I-1 Notice of Motion, Policy, and Procedure for Recruitment of the Chief Administration Officer.
Actually, could you start right from the top? I think, uh, that takes care of the meat, the motion to amend, should it pass?
Oh, okay. That the April 30th, uh, 2019 council meeting agenda be amended as follows. Remove Item I-1 Notice of Motion, Policy, and Procedure for the Recruitment of a Chief Administration Officer.
Thank you, um. I have Counselor Kissel. Could you turn your mic off, Count, Deputy Reeve?
Through the Reeve. I'd like to ask why you would like to remove this? This has been a recommendation on many levels, and it's something that I think that we need. And it takes time to get these things to come forward. So, the sooner we start, the sooner we'll finish.
Um, we'll let the Deputy Reeve, uh, answer that question.
I would gladly respond, uh, like to respond to that. Because I do understand that, uh, our C O has been working on this, uh, now for over a month. And I do believe that all of Council is aware of it. So, I believe this is a redundant and a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Wright.
Through the Reeve to Counselor Shul. Um, Admin may be working on it, but who gave that directive? It wasn't a directive of Council. We don't have a motion that states anything like that. I don't understand why you would want to remove a motion that clearly indicates, um, that we've been advised is best practice. That should be done, and it's been advised, advised by many different entities. So, saying that somebody's working on something, I find that a little interesting that Admin would be working on something when we haven't given any direction.
And Counselor Hanson.
I was waiting for a response.
I, I can give a response to that. Uh, I mentioned to the C A O with some of the, uh, the legals that had come around that, uh, perhaps we could have not a policy, but a procedure that we could hand off to the next Council and bring it to Council at some point in the future. Um, so I believe that's planning on coming with some of the, the, what is it? The Code of Conduct or procedural bylaw amendments, and some of this will come. Um, and the other reason, quite frankly, is, uh, there's been some allegations of a breach of confidentiality on this, uh, item. And, uh, I don't believe we're going to go forward and talk about that in public right now. But, uh, that's the reason. So, Counselor Wright.
So, based on that response, would it not be something that should potentially be moved in camera? I didn't realize that, I real, while you are the Reeve, I didn't realize that the direction of one counselor put Administration into any form of motion. I thought it had to be five. I know when the email threads go around, when I ask for something as an individual, you clearly tell me that it has to be come from five. So, in this particular instance, it comes from one, and so we should remove it because you believe there's a breach of confidentiality, which I'd like to hear more on. Um, however-
Actually, I'm going to shut this off right here. Uh, you know, Council is fully aware of what's going on here. We don't need to pretend we don't. So, we're going to call the question. All in favor? And a recorded vote, please?
In favor.
In favor.
Strongly opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I'm trying to challenge the Chair. I'm not going to vote, no, I'm here to challenge the Chair.
Challenge the Chair. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know I'm going to lose on a five-four, or six-three, or whatever, but you, this is not how this goes down. We're allowed to debate this. If you don't agree with me, you can ask me to be quiet, or you can ask me to finish, but you still have to hear from the remainder of Council. Otherwise, we have not debated this properly.
If you, uh, became familiar with the, uh, the procedural bylaw, you'll find out that the Chair can limit debate. And that's exactly what I just did. So, how's your vote?
Opposed. Opposed.
That is carried. Uh, we will move, uh, so that is the, the amendment is well, so. Yeah, so we need one more motion to approve the agenda as amended. Deputy Reeve Shul. Sorry, Deputy Reeve Shul.
I'll make that motion that the April 30th, 2019 council meeting agenda be approved as amended.
All in favor? And recorded vote, Counselor Kissel.
Opposed.
Opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
And that is carried. Uh, we'll go for a motion for confirmation minutes for April 9th meeting. Deputy Reeve Shul.
I'll make that motion that, uh, okay. I'm a little confused with this new board here. Uh, that, uh, the April 30th, oh, just disappeared. Okay, I'll just approve the minute, uh, the minutes in the jet.
From, from April 9th.
From April 9th. Thank you.
All in favor? And, I didn't see. Oh, okay, go ahead. Uh, Counselor Kissel will have a recorded vote.
In favor.
Opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Uh, Counselor Wright, could I ask, do you have a problem with the minutes from, or April 9th? Oh, yeah, we'll move on. Uh, Item B-1, Mr. Woods.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and all of Council. Item B-1 is in respect to the financial statements of December 31st, 2018 for Rocky View County. Uh, we do have the auditors here today that will be presenting their audit findings report, and will be available for questions. Prior to that, uh, I do have a short presentation for Council, highlighting specific sections and material differences. Uh, I'm going to go review two of the statements. Uh, the Statement of Financial Position, which is compared year over year, and is much like a balance sheet, as well as the Statement of Operations, uh, compared budget to, uh, 2018 actual. We have included a detailed variance report within the package. And with that. Okay, so, uh, December 31st, 2018 financial statements have been audited. Uh, here is the Statement of Financial Position. Again, I'm going to go over the, uh, just to select, uh, sections within the statement, uh, more, the more material sections. Uh, first section I'd like to talk about is the temporary investments. Uh, the difference between the, the 2017 and the 2018 amount is basically due to bank indebtedness. Uh, sometimes we invest our surplus funds, um, and at the year end, uh, because we have outstanding check runs, auditors require us to actually book it as bank indebtedness, even though, um, we have the cash to cover this position. The other material, the difference in this is deferred revenue, uh, which is basically grants that we've received. And, uh, that has contributed to the temporary investments. Uh, the next line I'd like to talk about is deferred revenue. The difference between, uh, the 2018 and 2017 is basically the Cooperative Storm Management Initiative. Uh, you'll see this throughout the, the statements that, uh, we are still working on this project, and that 7.6 million is currently outstanding. Uh, we also have some grants of Municipal Sustainability Initiative, or M S I, as well as other grants, uh, making up that deferred revenue difference. Long-term debt, I'd just, uh, like to talk about long-term debt. Um, as you can see on your screens in front of you, this is what our debt is made up of. Uh, I would like to point out that in 2018, uh, the county did take a principal deferral uh, due to the collection of levies was short, and I have a screen on that as well. So, we did, uh, take a principal payment deferral of 3.4 million dollars for the 2018 year. Uh, No-13, this just covers our debt limits. Uh, Rocky View County, as of 2018, could borrow a total debt amount of 160 million dollars. We currently have 53 million dollars outstanding, which leaves us an amount, if we wanted to, borrow in the amount of 107 million dollars. As well, debt servicing, we're also able to service, uh, 20 million dollars of debt per year. Tangible capital assets, I thought this would be an interesting one for Council, just to show kind of, uh, the 620 million, what it consists of. Uh, vehicles for 14 million, buildings for 61 million, land for 68 million. Contributed assets, which is from developers, 211 million, and engineering structures, which covers most of our roads and water, wastewater treatment plants, for 265 billion. The Statement of Operations, again, this is page 26 of your agenda. Uh, just go over some, some highlights here. The cash and lieu, Public Reserve, uh, is up 3 million dollars this year. It's a very hard item to budget. Uh, what happens if developers do not give us land? They are required to give us cash and lieu. And as you can see, for the 2018 year, we had an increase of 3 million dollars. Government transfers, um, again, you'll see the C S M I, as we're still constructing this project, at 7.1 million dollars, which is the difference between the budget of 10 million dollars and the actual of 3 million dollars. Revenue, uh, go over development agreements and levies. Uh, although it was close to budget, the collection was, uh, favored for transportation offsite levies. As you can see, we collected 1 million dollars in water, wastewater levies, and this is why we did take a payment deferral. Uh, stormwater levies of 1.3 million dollars and transportation of 5.8 million dollars. On the expense side, uh, again, covering the more material expenses. Uh, we have, uh, transportation field services, again, the C S M I project, which is outstanding, is causing a lot of these differences. And also, uh, other drainage projects for 1 million, as well as, uh, reclassification of capital roads. Uh, when it hits our tangible cap, capital asset policy, it hits a certain threshold, we have to take it over to the capital budget. And approximately 1 million dollars in roads was taken from operating and moved to the capital budget. Recreation parks, uh, this is basically, uh, as I mentioned before, the Public Reserve. Uh, increase of 3 million dollars there, as well as the, um, district grants that we supply for our recreation. Uh, if they don't use it, these amounts are transferred to the Public Reserve and used for capital projects. Contributed assets, as I mentioned before, what these are is they are assets turned over to the county from developers. Uh, for the 2018 year, it was 21 million dollars worth of assets that we put onto our books. We don't budget for this because it's a very hard line to budget for. Uh, it's dependent on developers and the timing of which the development is complete. Again, government transfers for capital, this is on the Statement of Operations at the bottom. The, uh, two main drivers of this is the, uh, Langdon Fire Hall, which we are still in the process of, uh, constructing, or at least starting to construct, as well as the Brad Creek Flood Mitigation Project, for 23 and a half million dollars. That project is still ongoing. That's why you're seeing a difference here. And accumulated surplus, which is at the bottom of the page, consisting of 661 million dollars. This is comprised of all of our restricted, uh, surpluses, as well as the surplus for the 2018 year. As Council will see, there is a 6.9 million dollar surplus for the December 31st, 2018 year, as well as the, uh, stack, tax stabilization reserve, which, uh, Council has, um, used of. Uh, upon approval of the financial statements, the surplus of 6 million, 950,000 dollars will be transferred to the tax stabilization reserve, which will give it a balance of approximately 29 million dollars. Uh, now, if we go to, uh, Audit Findings Report, there is one point on the Audit Findings Report, um, with respect to significant differences, and I'd just like to address this now. Uh, what is to do with this gravel pit reclamation? Currently, we've identified, Administration has identified 2.7 million dollars worth of complete gravel rec, rec, reclamation, sorry. So, if we were to close all our pits today, uh, we would need 2.7 million dollars to provide that reclamation. Uh, we do not have a reserve or a liability set up for this currently. Uh, as you can see, we are doing a detailed review of our gravel pits. We'll get a better handle on an estimation for this, uh, at which point we will set up a liability. Currently, the county does fund 280,000 dollars worth of gravel pit reclamation per year. So, this would be, uh, a liability to satisfy the closure of all our gravel pits. And again, because we're doing this detailed study, um, we would like to get better information prior to setting up this liability. Uh, the last point I'd like to cover is the Independent Auditors' Report, uh, their opinion. This is why they do the audit. Uh, it's what, uh, we would call an unqualified opinion. There is no qualifications to it, which is substantially a clean audit opinion. That concludes my, uh, presentation. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that Council may have. And then I would request that, uh, we bring the auditors up to present their audit findings report, and the Council will be able to answer any questions of our auditors.
Thank you. We do have a couple of questions. Counselor Kissel?
Through the Reeve. Good morning, Mr. Woods. Um, I just have a question about the interest. What is the total interest we pay on all our debt for 2018? What was that number? Do you have that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Kissel. We paid approximately 1.8 million dollars in interest for all of our debt for the 2018 year. Interest is a required payment. Uh, as I mentioned before, principal, we can take a deferral on it if we do not have the levies to cover it, but interest is something we are required to pay regardless.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanson.
Yes, uh, good morning, Mr. Woods. Um, in Schedule Four in the notes, we see that there is approximately a 35 million dollar shortfall from, uh, total government transfers. And my question, you touched on it briefly off and on, but, um, altogether, it's 35 million, which is significant. My question is, is this just a shortfall due to timing delays? Or has anything significant happened in terms of us not constructing, um, capital projects that we're getting, uh, the funding for? So, timing, or are we not doing something we're supposed to be doing?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hanson. It's definitely timing. Uh, those funds are committed for projects. We do approval process through the government. Once they are approved, the funding is secure. Uh, it's a matter of applying those funds to completed projects.
Thank you.
Deputy Reeve Shul.
My word. Counselor Gutierrez.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Woods. Good morning. Um, a couple of questions I have, and, uh, the one is the, um, the 14 million dollars that we had, we paid out quite a while ago. I know that we were, we were talking about putting a million dollars away back into reserves on that. I didn't see that anywhere in here. Is that tucked into long-term debt somewhere that I, I must have missed?
Through the Chair to Counselor Gutierrez. Uh, it's, it is a transfer to reserve that we do every year. Uh, transfers are removed from the financial statements for clarity purposes, because they do not add dollars to the statements. Um, we have made that 1 million dollar, uh, payment each year that we have committed to doing.
Thank you. And just want to go back to the, because there's always a discussion around the, the east water and wastewater, sorry, water and wastewater lines there, um, and I, and I didn't get the debt written down quick enough. Can you just go back to your slide and, or what is, I guess, what is that debt today? Or the balance of that debt today?
Through the Chair to Counselor Gutierrez. Uh, the water ending debt for 2018 is 10 and a half million dollars. And the wastewater, as of December 31st, 2018, uh, 35, 857, 497 for wastewater. Total, uh, water and wastewater would be 46 million, 398, 762,000.
Thank you. And just, um, I had a question about the, uh, liability for the, uh, gravel pits, um, where it was 2.7 million. I, I know you're going to be doing studies, and that's great. But, um, we're setting aside, so, did you say 280,000 dollars per year already in, uh, in reclaiming?
Through the Chair, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Reeve Shul.
Oh, my question is-
Sorry, I think-
No problem.
Mr. Reiman has a comment on that.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, uh, the answer provided by Mr. Woods, the 280,000 dollars is put in the operating budget. It's not set aside. It's work that we actually carry out year to year to reclaim gravel pits as we move through the process.
Counselor Hanson?
So, just a follow-on question, uh, through the Reeve to Mr. Reiman. What's the current, uh, life expectancy of our existing pits?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, tough to provide an answer based on how many different pits we had, have. Uh, but I would say we're within a 15 to 20-year life expectancy for our gravel resources.
On average, and what's the life expectancy of the shortest one?
Uh, probably five years.
So, we have five years to do our study and get it sorted out?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have Deputy Reeve Shul on the board, but I don't see. Is anyone? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and no, I, uh, Counselor Gutierrez, uh, actually, uh, asked a question where I was leading, because I wanted to know if how much was the debt for, I guess I will ask, some of the debt that we have. That includes fire trucks, et cetera, too, doesn't that?
Through the Chair to Deputy Reeve Shul, as was shown on my slide previously.
Yeah, and I thought it was on there. I just wondered.
Yeah, it, the categories of our debt are, are recreation, local improvements, fire services, uh, water and wastewater.
Thank you.
Facilities.
Thank you. Just on this board, the only one that isn't on the, the, uh, my screen right now is Counselor Kissel, and Deputy Reeve's on twice. I do have a quick question. Um, you mentioned where we deferred a capital payment, and I wonder why, when we're putting 6.9 million plus or minus 7 million into reserves, why would we have to defer a capital payment? Is there a process that, uh, that I, I think the public should know about of why we would do that?
Uh, to the Chair and all of Council. One of the reasons is we have a philosophy of our water and wastewater debt would be paid through development. Uh, as I mentioned in my presentation, the collection of those levies did not materialize as anticipated. Uh, we are fortunate that we have this debt. We can do these kinds of strategies or options to, uh, reduce those payments. Uh, and in the future, repay those payments through the collection of levies. And again, it's because of our philosophy of developers paying for this infrastructure.
So, just for clarity, is that a philosophy or a policy?
Uh, to the Chair, it's actually set out in the boring bylaws that are associated with that debt. It talks about, uh, how we will repay that debt.
So, previous councils have set that, that it has to come from levies to make the payment?
Uh, yeah, the, the, the way the bylaws worded, sorry, to the Chair, the way the bylaws worded is, you, you have the option. So, we certainly can use tax dollars if we, if we're not having enough, um, levies in any given year. We've chosen, though, not to do that on most occasions. Some years, we've had to. Uh, but, um, in most cases, we want to rely on the development to pay for that debt.
I think maybe as we go through budget, that, that's an item the Council may want to look at. I, I, uh, think when you have a greater pot, and we're deferring capital payments, and you're putting money in reserves, we should be paying our debt down, but that's just one opinion. Counselor Kissel?
Through the Reeve, just to, um, add to that. If we're deferring our payments, and we're only paying our interest, what is our payback schedule? What have we done with that? I'd like to know, uh, you know, I go mortgage my home. I have a plan. What's our plan?
Again, currently, uh, there, there has been years where we've had excess payments made through the levy structure, and we have applied those to the debt. The, the plan is still to pay off all capital debt, uh, through development levies, if possible.
Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, looking forward to that debate, because another opinion would be, we should be using overall, uh, taxpayer revenue to pay for increased services like recreation and community halls, as opposed to a water and wastewater system for East Balzac that's supposed to be funded by development. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Deputy Reeve Shul?
Just a, a quick question on that deferred payment, and obviously, there'll be interest from that. So, uh, does that interest, uh, get added on to the developer's levies when they pay?
Through the Chair to Deputy Reeve Shul. Absolutely does.
Thank you. Now, I got Deputy Reeve Shul back on again. Is there anyone wants? It's there. It says Presenter's Podium and Deputy Reeve Shul. So. Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, if we could get our auditors to come forward and give us their report?
Thank you. Uh, just like to introduce Julie Oliver from, uh, M N P, the county's auditor.
Thank you. I am Julie Oliver with M N P, as Barry introduced. Uh, I would like to present my audit findings, which, uh, start on page 55 of your agenda package. I'll move to page 58, where we talk about outstanding matters. Uh, one of the items that was mentioned was a completed legal confirmation, which has been received in the interim between, uh, when this was submitted and, and now, so that's no longer outstanding. Uh, one of the other outstanding matters in terms of finalization of the audit is subsequent events update. Uh, we talk about that here just before approval of the financial statements, as the financial statements need to include disclosure of any items that have occurred up to the date of the audit report or the approval of the statements. And so, I would ask at this time of management and Council if they're aware of any other, um, issues that have arisen, uh, since year end that may require disclosure in the financial statements. Okay. Um, the other outstanding matters include approval of the financial statements, for which, uh, we'll ask for a motion after the completion of my report. Um, one of the items that I'd like to talk about also on this page is materiality. It was set at 3 million dollars. That was the same as was reported to you in the Audit Planning Report. It's based on 3% of gross revenues, and there's also no change from the prior year. So, the 3 million dollars is consistent level of materiality we used year over year. Uh, going forward as well, we report on the next page that there's no deficiencies in, uh, internal controls. Uh, all of page 59 is kind of a no news is good news, uh, kind of report. Uh, there's, uh, a lot of answers that, there's none of this, none of that, and that's all good news. Uh, we would like to acknowledge the assistance of the staff of Rocky View County throughout the audit. Uh, page 60, we confirm that there are no changes in accounting policies or significant changes in how estimates have been applied. We do take a great, um, deal of time looking at the disclosures and the presentation of the financial statements to ensure that it's accurate and reflects, uh, the reality of, of the county. Um, and we do conclude that the disclosures are clear and appropriate. On page 60, we also highlighted in our report the significant- On page sixty, we also highlighted in our report the significant difference that Barry spoke of before related to the reclamation obligation of two point seven million. Moving forward to page sixty-one, that's our independence confirmation and on page twenty, or pardon me, seventy-two, there's also a letter formally acknowledging the independence of MNP, which is important that your auditor be independent of all of the staff and council of the county. Page sixty-three goes over just our processes and our significant things that we're reporting on. And we do take a good deal of time to look at, as I said, financial statement, presentation, disclosure. One of the key risk areas that we spend time on is revenue recognition and the appropriateness of those grants that you may have record, received in advance of actually being eligible or spending those funds and ensuring that they get deferred appropriately then. And then page sixty-five has the audit report, the draft audit report. Barry mentioned that the first paragraph now includes the opinion, this, the, the report does look different from the past. I believe I introduced that in the audit service plan, that it was going to be different due to changing audit standards, that this is the new format. So it starts with the opinion and it is a clean opinion, as Barry noted, and then goes through the various different responsibilities of management and responsibilities of the auditor, including communicating directly with council, which we're doing here today. So that concludes my presentation of the audit findings. Are there any questions from council?
So far, so good. Counselor Hanson?
One question in terms of internal controls and not having an opinion on that as part of the audit. Is that a slightly different type of audit or is that a completely separate engagement if we need to have our internal controls looked at at some point?
Through the chair to Counselor Hanson, there can be different engagements set up for reviewing internal controls. In the course of our audit, we do look at internal controls as they pertain and impact the numbers that are reflected in the audit. We did do a substantive auto approach, which means we do sampling and test the actual backup as opposed to looking at the, the sign-offs or the, the key controls. But for each of the transaction cycles, we do get an understanding of what the key controls over the financial cycle are and do a walkthrough to make sure that those are functioning. However, we don't report on those unless there's deficiencies in, in order for direction to be given to, to management to, to clear up those deficiencies.
All right, so if there was something glaring that you would have seen, we would have heard about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I see no questions to that. I, I think that's a good sign. Oh, we got another one. Deputy Reeve Shul?
No, I don't have a question, but if there is no other questions, I will make a motion.
Okay, we'll accept the motion, but thank you very much and it's good to hear that we have no issues. So, thank you. Deputy Reeve Shul?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that 2018 audit financial statements be approved as presented in attachment A.
Mr. Woods, did you have something? Okay, uh, no debate, all in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go to D1.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, Mr. Deputy Reeve and counselors. As is our protocol, I am Cole Nelson, the Corporate Business Development Manager for Rocky View County. Item D1 in your agenda package is a new project, as is the associated funding request on behalf of the Brad Creek Connect Committee. This group has been working since early 2018 on a plan that would see broadband internet servicing brought to their community. Since becoming aware of council's approved notice of motion and the subsequent approval of the related project plan to investigate broadband throughout the county, the group has indicated their interest and ability to evolve and also focus on the broader geographical goal of broadband internet servicing countywide. Administration has reviewed the group's request for funds, looked at the balance of funds associated with the previously approved project of a similar nature, and additionally confirmed with the CARES, Community and Regional Economic Support Program Funding Agent, we have concluded that related amounts identified in this report are accurate. Should council elect to support and further fund this new initiative, it will be eligible for the CARES grant consideration. Importantly, administration stresses that this new project and the project early approved by council on February 26, 2019, related to broadband internet study are inherently related. But this new opportunity can be expected to exceed the outcomes of the previous and will also require more time and more funds to complete. For these reasons, administration will advise that the projects not be ran concurrently, but the council decide upon which project will move ahead as a single body of work. In closing, administration is pleased to have in attendance Ms. Kelly, Kelty Atos and other delegates from the Brad Creek Committee. If you would like to hear from the Brad Creek Connect Group, they are present and ready to be heard. Otherwise, administration is available for any questions council may have. This concludes the report for item D1.
Thank you. We do have a question. Counselor Wright?
Through the reef, just a question. I'm wondering why this is coming as a D item and not as a GPC presentation? And it's highly irregular that we have a group come and speak to D, so can I just get some clarification on that, please?
Through the reef, Counselor Wright, I believe the request for funding would require a council decision and therefore we thought it expedient because we are holding back on the current project, hoping not to misuse the funds that were previously approved if, if council decided that those funds could now be directed towards this new project.
Counselor McKyler?
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a couple of questions. On the original motion, on Counselor Wright's motion for funding that was approved February, how much work have we sort of, how far along that path have we gone?
Through the reef, Counselor McKyler, to date, we started on, I believe it was phase one of that project contacting the numerous stakeholders, ISP, internet providers, to range them into a voluntary session so we could engage them a bit about what they're doing, what they're planning to do. Could this possibly be something we work collaboratively on to bring broadband to the county? And also, we've investigated on a very preliminary level what policy tools might be at our disposal to try and facilitate broadband into the new areas that would be coming on for growth in the county.
Thank you. And if council decided to, I guess, merge these two projects, for lack of a better word, and provide the, provide the top-up funding, who would, who would be the project lead? Would it be the county would remain or would it be the Brad Creek Connect Group?
At this point, pardon me, through the reef, Counselor McKyler, at this point, we would certainly assume a role as the funding application party as a municipality. Only nonprofits and municipalities can do that. So by the nature of that funding, I think we would maintain a leadership role in the project, although we would rely heavily on the consulting proposal that was put forward by the Brad Creek Connect Community and it relies on two firms, Taylor Warwick and Magus Engineering.
Thank you. And, and the, the additional project then would, would get us a more wholesome view of the, the entire county and their current inventory and needs and abilities throughout every division versus just a Brad Creek focus?
Through the reef, Counselor McKyler, yes, I believe you're, you're correct in that assumption. They have permitted or submitted in their proposal that what they would bring us is much deeper than what was initially approved by council for the sixty thousand dollars and that in fact it would be shovel-ready, looking for final design, final engineering and submission for any type of funding that might be available to it.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Through the chair to Mr. Nelson, what was the population scope of the original piece of work that the Brad Creek Connect was working on?
Through the chair to Counselor Hanson, I'm not entirely familiar with their initial scope. All I can state to is that their proposal we recently received was for county-wide scope, but you're certainly at your discretion to, to ask them directly.
And you are not aware of the area scope as well then?
Through the reef, Counselor Hanson, as I stated, the, the proposal that was submitted to the council, the county that was provided to today is county-wide is the scope, so it would be our, our current population within the boundaries.
No, I'm talking about the original project.
Again, through the reef, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with what their original scope was, that's, that's not a consideration for us.
Okay, because our admin report says that there's significant overlap. So I'm wondering how we qualified significant if, or produce redundancies. It sounded quite ominous when we read it, I read it. What are those redundancies, do you think?
Through the reef, Counselor Hanson, for simplicity's sake, they would have taken a portion of Brad Creek, not being able to define that completely for today, and it would have been overlapped on what we would have done as a county-wide scope. So whatever their scope would have been, it would have come in addition to the scope we did in that same area.
Because it first pass until I hear more, but my understanding is it's roughly twice the price for a much, 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 much bigger project, which has me a little bit curious. And I think underneath all that, another question is what happens if Brad Creek ends up at the bottom of the list of priorities as a result of this countywide study?
Through the reef, Counselor Hanson, it would be my expectation that the study would be based on its merits. Council will make a decision on the merits of the study and we would be independent of any geographical priority.
Or would there be a built-in bias because of the source of the project?
Counselor Hanson, he, he gave you a pretty good answer. So if you have a point, get to it, please.
How do you foresee a project that was originally sponsored by the hamlet of Brad Creek with certain expectations for the hamlet to be mitigated with an overall countywide project?
Through the reef, Counselor Hanson, again, I, the county would be a, a proponent on the application for CARES, so we would have a responsibility to make sure that our scope was concluded properly. Two, I'll offer today that we are familiar with some previous work done by Taylor Warwick for the Calgary Regional Partnership, and in that report, they detailed numerous communities within the Calgary region. So I, I can only assume that, you know, the professional requirements and their professionalism would dictate that they would give us a wholesome report for the county.
I'm not debating that. I'm suggesting that the Division One ratepayers may have a slightly different opinion of where this is headed if they were all supporting this originally. But question for administration through the chair, at what level of expenditure do we have to go through the three bids and a buy process?
Through the chair, just, just one second, Counselor Hanson, I will have that answer for you just in a sec.
We can continue questioning, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, Counselor Kamachi?
Through the chair, thank you. Just to clarify, you know, given that we made the motion for administration to look into the internet for all of Rocky View, at that time, the Brad Creek Internet Committee had been, it's been over a year and a half, and what I saw was redundancies. If we were to start from that scratch, we would be spending money in terms of information and research that has already been done by the Brad Creek Committee, brought it up with Mr. Nelson, and it wasn't until that the economic conference in Banff a couple of weeks ago that we got to hear Jennifer Massick speak. And that point in time, you know, it was kind of a realization that, yeah, we would be wasting ratepayer money by starting from scratch, and so I brought it forward.
Okay, we got to listen to the point of order. Can you give up your mic? We'll get you back in the queue.
I believe that Counselor Kamachi is bringing in new information, and I believe our job is to ask questions, and that's not what's happening here right now.
I think you're mistaken. I will rule on the point of order. I, I don't rule with you at all. This is not a public hearing. He can basically enlighten council to the questions that were given. He can enlighten to his satisfaction. This is not a public hearing. He, he is not compelled to ask questions only.
Okay, so then maybe you can clarify for me, Counselor Hanson, you just shortened him up and said to make it a question and this is not. I'd like to understand how this works.
I didn't say make a question. I said he was given an answer and I felt the answer was sufficient. He could have challenged the chair if he didn't think it was. And he obviously thought it was a sufficient answer. He moved on to another topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Counselor Kamachi if we could, please?
Simply, all I'm trying to do is save counselor, council time and ratepayers money. So do I need to make a motion for Ms. Laut, oh, sorry, Kelty, for them to, to speak and present?
Yes, we would need a motion to, to have a group address.
I would like to make that motion that the group from Brad Creek Internet Committee as well as Jennifer Massick come up and, and present us with some information that we can all look at objectively.
Okay, we'll call that question. All in favor? Counselor Wright?
Oh, sorry, I thought we were doing that. Through the reef, so I, I know we're waiting on the response for a single source and I believe it's fifty thousand dollars is what that is, what that is. Do we have that?
Through the chair to, well, to all of council. So below ten thousand is when we're not, we don't look at any type of competitive, or it's not required as a competitive bid. Ten to fifty thousand informal, three quotes, and then above fifty, public competitive bidding is required.
So given that that's the response, how could we even make a motion on this? Would we not, are we not getting ahead of ourselves? And it's not that I don't want to hear this group. They might be the best group, but if anything over fifty thousand dollars warrants it going out to public consultation, would there not be a bias if we listen to this group and then potentially they end up getting the contract down the road? Like I said, I'm not debating whether or not these, this group is the best option, but in order to determine that, we would have to go out and, and maybe there would be no other bids and at that time, but I think to listen to them speak now and then to give them the bias, to give them the, the contract down the road, we could be accused of some form of bias. And I would, I just would look to administration, perhaps Mr. Hogan on that one to see, are we outstepping our bounds? Because that's something I don't want to do.
Through the chair to council, I think the reason it, it came today is there was an opportunity that has already taken place in terms of the internet. Counselor Wright made the motion several months ago to do a Rocky View wide. This work had already been in progress and was fairly deep into the, into the process with the Brad Creek Internet Committee. They came to us with an opportunity and, and some information on a potential CARES grant that would only cost the county another twenty-four thousand-ish dollars should the care on top of the original sixty thousand. According to, and as Mr. Robinson just said, there is a procurement policy and we certainly, we certainly should be held to that. So I, I have no issue with, I'm putting the financial side of this on hold, doing, doing the procurement and at that point, moving forward, understanding that, that the speed to which the internet process happens will be significantly delayed by doing that. So I, I think in the term, I think what Mr. Nelson has been indicating and with the committee who's already done a bunch of work is we're trying to piggyback on some of that work and save time and save, and save energy with a group magnet who's already has done quite a bit of work for the Brad Creek. So if it's council's wish that we put this on, on the financial side of this on hold and go to, go to a formal procurement process, absolutely, we will, we'll accept that from council.
Thank you. Well, we'll, we'll deal with that. Go ahead, Counselor Wright.
It's not quite where I was going. That's just the financial part of it. Again, I'm wondering about bias, but back to this CARES grant, when would that money come through?
Through the reef to Counselor Wright, my conversations with the agent were pretty preliminary, whether or not we would even qualify. qualify.
Okay.
From what I understand and reading their documentation, which did pose that initial question about would we qualify, once that was confirmed, I did further read that they have an intake period. I believe that concludes the end of June. So as far as disbursement of those funds and decisions on the applications, I would assume it would be sometime in the latter half of the year, but I can't give you a precise date.
Okay, so currently, we have $60,000 allocated, and my understanding is that based on the preliminary work you're going to do, you're going to have something pretty fulsome, I'm thinking, by October. My understanding is for CARES is it's open between May 1st and May 31st with a 90-day window after that, so the funding would actually come forward in September-ish. So they wouldn't even get started on that, or would they be started? And what if they are declined? Is then the county on the hook for the entire amount? Because it's one thing to approve. Right now, we're only in it for $60,000, and it's doing preliminary work. As it stands, we're looking at doing the whole county, and the CARES funding is $82,500, so where does that come from if we get a big nay from the government?
Through the reef, Counselor Wright. I think clearly stated in the report was that our funding is only contingent on approval of the CARES grant, so we'd be in a holding pattern if we get direction today for that funding to be approved.
Okay, so technically, then, we're not doing anything until September, because that's when that funding opportunity, so this entire project is now going to be put on hold until September, is that correct? Because we're now displacing the $50,000 that we had, or $60,000, what was it? Can't remember what it was, $60,000, that we had originally given to your department. And that's, you're saying that they, since they can't run concurrently, and I'm sort of wondering if maybe they should, I'm wondering if Brad Creek should maybe continue with their study for their particular region, and then we look at something bigger. That's where I'm sort of leaning at this particular moment, but again, I'm not sure. I'd like to hear a little bit more information, but yeah, so is it going to be until October then, or September, that they're not going to start this? In which case then, we're wasting five months, four months?
Through the reef, Counselor Wright. My response to that is they are, they are different scope. And so to be clear, what we had initially proposed in counsel approval of $60,000 for an assessment of what broadband across the county would look like, and to give you a high-level estimate of costing, that was going to be supplied to you as soon as we could with an October deadline. And so this project, at this point, is much deeper, and in their project proposal, they're talking about a completion date and a report back to counsel. I believe it is in May of 2020. So again, I'm not entirely sure how this period of time in delay waiting for possible CARES grant funding, then kicking off the county's contribution would affect them, but my assumption would be is they may be able to speak to that directly about how any type of a delay might then impede them delivering a much deeper, albeit with a higher price tag, report back based on their schedule of May 2020.
Which once again takes us back to, we're assuming that these guys are going to get the contract without going out to RFP.
Now, I did have Ms. Atink inform me that I didn't count the right, the vote properly on whether or not we should have the people come up and give us a presentation. So I think as a prevailing side, I will ask that we rescind that first vote, and we'll call the question again on the motion to hear from the group. Yeah, that the Brad Creek Connect Committee be allowed to present to counsel. We'll call the question again. All in favor? And we'll have a recorded vote. Counselor Kissel.
Opposed.
I'm in, I'm just going to say in favor, but it's questionable.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
And that is carried.
Now, we do have a problem at five to 10:00. We're running into, we're going to run into public hearing time, but if we want to hear from them now, or we do have another question, Counselor McIlroy.
Thank you. Through the chair, and I'll just, I'll try to be quick here. So the funds to top up the current project that's 28, 28.5, contingent on receiving the grant, so could be zero, could be 28.5. What are the requirements then between $10,000 and $50,000? Mr. Robinson, can you remind me again?
So the amounts are between 10 and 50, is three quotes. We look at an informal process. Above $50,000 for cost of goods and services, we look at a formal process of RFPs, RFQs, those types of things.
Thank you. My follow-on question to that is then, through our initial project scoping of the $60,000, we've talked to services providers about, you know, have they given us an idea of what they would charge, if anything, for, to look at this? And I know the original scope of the project was probably just more the low-hanging fruit, as I recall, but do we have any idea of what a more fulsome project's scope based on our informal conversations with some of the Internet service providers?
Through the chair to Counselor McIlroy. I can only offer you my opinion, and that would more or less be from the scope that counsel approved at $60,000 for what we had procured to the scope that's now being offered in this current proposal, I think at a stated amount of $165,000. You're getting a significant amount of engineering, design work, business cases, from what I understand, and even cooperation to assist on the CARES funding grant. So it's pretty hard to compare apples to apples and assume what a equal proposal might look like from other tenders, but I can only offer you, based on what we initially procured at $60,000, that there's fairly good value at $165,000, and I don't, I don't think that number would necessarily be considerably less should it go out to tender had we done that as the scope for the first project.
Thank you. And, you know, I guess my, you know, we can hear from the group or not hear from the group or move this table aside. It doesn't particularly matter. I think ultimately, the spirit of Counselor Wright's original motion was that we look to provide Internet services for all of Rocky View County, not just the low-hanging fruit, not just the communities that are close in, and I truly believe that it's going to take an investment for us to figure that out. And whether it's this investment or another investment, I think I was a little concerned with the original report and what we were going to be able to deliver back to this council to achieve those goals that Counselor Wright originally had set out. So I think the spirit of this is fantastic. If we have to go through a different process to get there, then we'll have that discussion, but I think I would rather have all the information and know all the costs and what we can and can't do long before any council, whether it's this one or the next one, makes a decision about what leverage to pull in the future.
While you have the mic, would you mind giving us a motion to table this until after public hearings?
I'd like to move that.
Go ahead, Counselor Kissel.
I just have one question before, and I'll make that motion. The CARES program, is that something that Rocky View County alone can apply for that funding and put towards this project, or is it something that has to be done as a joint venture with an outside party?
Through the reef, Counselor Kissel. I don't believe that we would need a partner on a CARES funding application, and it's broadest application. You know, this one being that it's somewhat technical, we would still seek one in this application, but the CARES funding is for regional economic development.
So we could actually apply for this funding ourselves to put towards this project regardless of who actually gets the bid?
I believe that to be correct. Sorry, through the reef.
Thank you. I'd like to move that item D1 be tabled until after the morning public hearings.
Thank you. Call the question. All in favor? That is carried. We'll take a five-minute break and come back for C1.[1125.58]
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order and we will go to item C1, Division 9, Counselor Kessel.
Move to open.
Move to open the hearing, all in favor? That is carried, and could we get the report, please?
Good morning Chair and Council members, my name is Xin Dong Municipal Planner representing Planning and Development Services. The subject land is in Division 9 located at the northeast junction of Highway 22 and Highway 567. The applicant proposed to amend the direct control bylaw is called DC 96. In order to include a mini storage as a new use in development cell B and cell C. DC bylaw 96 divided the property into three cells, cell A, cell B, and the cell C. You will see more detail in the next slide. This property has been used for RV parking ground, campground and the storage for over 10 years. The property is serviced by water well and sewage treatment system. The stormwater is managed through the, through the stormwater pond onsite. Cell A will contain a complex commercial building, include a gas station, convenience store, liquor store, and RV parking office. There's some pictures taken onsite, this one was taken on, through the major entrance, looking here, you will see the sign for the gas station. And that's a complex commercial building, this is a close up for the commercial building. Cell B is a primary use at the campground. And the cell C is currently used as the RV and the trailer storage area, here is a picture for this RV trailer storage area. And our enforcement of, our enforcement services received a complaint about unshielded the lighting fixture on the existing storage minute located here. When the police officer went to the property, they realized the existing mini storage do not have a valid the development permit. And the problem is the mini storage units is now the least used in the existing DC bylaw. So administration otherwise the applicant to amend the DC bylaw first to include the mini storage as a use in the cell B and cell C. Once it's approved, then the applicant apply develop permit and the building permit to bring the existing mini store unit into compliance. Here's some photos for the mini storage. Each mini storage unit is about the 3 meter by 2.44 meter, which is about the 7 square meter in size. The applicant indicate they had shot down some lighting fixtures that could be seen from the highway, which address the complaints. This application was evaluated in according with the county plan and the DC bylaw. The proposed mini storage meet the highway business policy within the county plan and meet the intent of a DC bylaw 96. And also compatible with the existing uses and the list uses in 96, in DC 96. The property is located in the agriculture area. You see some highway business use and the gravel piece located to the east. Small agriculture and the residential development located to the west and the south. The application was circulated to 60 Jason the landowners and the one letter in opposition was received. Conclusion, the proposal complies with the county plan, meet the intent of a DC bylaw 96. And compatible with the commercial uses listed in 96, DC 96. Here are two videos, one video was taken in cell C, but you can also see the existing mini storage in the cell B. Another video was taken here in cell A, you can see the current situation on the property. Let's start with this one. So facing north, you see some existing RV trailer storage located in cell C. Here's the existing trailers. Coming to the south, you start to see some mini storage units. So those are the 92 units so far in total. Here is Highway 567, you see the vehicle passing by, and here is Highway 22 to the west. And then move back, continue cell C where the trailers and the RV storage located. This is Highway 22. They have a fence, this is closed at the building, at the enclosed at the RV storage area. And the video move back. And ended at the north end. And another video took in cell A. They facing north, you see that's the primary entrance for the RV campground. Pending to the east, you see this is the one existing dwelling that's provided for the owner. Here's the, the stormwater ponds located behind the, the house. Here's some parking areas. Here is the major entrance to the property. And this is the Highway 567. Move to the west, you start to see the sign for this gas station, and this is a commercial building, facing here is a RV parking office. And this building is the accessory building for the wastewater treatment plant. This is another existing dwelling for the staff. And here is the water, people can get water from here. And then move back to this entrance for the campground. Thank you.
At this time, we will call on, excuse me, we'll call on the applicant to come forward and tell us about your proposal, you have 20 minutes. State your name for the record, please, and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sean Vrat, I represent Vrat Holdings, which is the parent company of Spring Hill, the property that you guys have just viewed. Couple quick little comments about us, we're a family business, we opened up back in 2005, where we've continued to operate a business of an RV campground, storage, as well as a gas station liquor store. Since which point we've currently leased out the liquor store and gas station, now primarily just operate the RV park and, and storage. We, we, I must apologize, we did go forward with, with this development thinking that it was within the scope, those containers are not permanent buildings, they're actually converted C cans. We've had C cans on our property for a number of years in the storage, and we did feel that it was, it was, it was permitted to have on, on place. At which point we were notified that we weren't, and that's why we have put forward an application now to, to be compliant. Something else a little bit about us, we're, we're very active in the community, we, we support little local charities such as Friends of Westbrook, Children's Hospital Foundation. As well as Cochrane Activates, so we're very, very, very active in the community and, and believe in supporting and being a good neighbor in the community. What we're proposing to do is to allow many stores to be allowed use on our property. We currently have 94 in place that are non-conforming that we want to make conforming. We want to ask to have a total of 580 to allow for future expansion. We don't know what the market's going to allow for us, but it seems like every time we have to do anything on our property, we have to go before council again, so we're trying to basically be proactive for the future and, and give us the option or opportunity to expand as need be. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, we do have questions now, Counselor Wright.
I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Vrat, or if it's for Admin, just in, so you're planning on reducing the scope of your RV storage and, and making it more mini storage? So, does the county, probably more for Admin, does, does administration, when we're looking at permit then, is it, can, is it flexible how much RV storage he can have and how much mini storage he can have? Or could he potentially flip the whole thing over to mini storage if we find RV storage isn't working out? Just want to ask this in case you want to expand the business, right?
Counselor, I could, I could definitely answer that. Basically, what we want to do is exactly just what you'd said, is we, we'd like to, as the market demands, we would like to convert current RV storage into, into mini storage, as a business standpoint, it is more profitable for us, which makes sense for, for, to go, to go that route. Another reason why we also want to go into, into the RV park cell is to have that option to convert some of our RV park airlands as well into future storage. As need be, like I said, it, it's all market dictated whether or not it can support it, and it's, if it's viable for our business to move forward in that direction.
So is, for Admin then, is that going to be problematic because it's divided into cells? Or can we just have all the cells include so that we have some compliance of some form?
Through the Chair, so far the applicant only require to include the mini store in cell B and C.
Okay.
Once the marketing change, the applicant have a chance to come back to amend it if they want to hold our property to be used as a mini store, he can amend the DC bylaw again at the time.
Okay, so it would require an additional amendment down the road?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Just to, before I go to Counselor Hanson there, I misunderstood then, the applicant said that they would like to get this to where they don't have to come back. And they're in compliance, and yet now we're hearing they are going to have to come back if they want to expand again?
Because so, to the Chair, because so far they request to include the mini store in cell B and C only. In one day, if they want to include in cell A as well, then that will be another amendment. But so far they provide the maximum mini storage that will be good enough for the next couple of years in cell B and cell C. So they don't have to come back in the near future.
Okay, thank you, I see Mr. Bars has.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, so fools jump in. You are changing the uses in the DC bylaw, the bylaw does not specify percentages, for example. It may be you come back as a new development permit to expand, but it's not really up to us to kind of judge what's the appropriate percentage, it's a market-driven decision. So the bylaw could allow theoretically go entirety to many storage within those two cells. Or back to RV storage as the, as the applicant determines the use, or the demand, I should say.
Thank you, we'll go to Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, my first question was along the lines of the Reeves, so that ultimate number of 580 is not part of today's discussion, that's for a development permit, is that correct?
Through the Chair, that is a part of amendment should be approved today. So if you see the bylaw, Schedule A, that's include the three amendment. Amendment one is to include this mini store in cell B. Amendment two is include the mini store in cell C. And another amendment is to approve this maximum number of mini store units, which is 580. So this is three amendment need to be considered today.
Okay, I think that's finally clear, because that was my first impression and I was having my mind changed, but now I'm back to where I was originally, I think, so. Question to the applicant through the Reeves. Where exactly does 580 fit and what do you currently approve for in terms of RV parking in cell C, say? Does 580 take out all of cell C, or just some background, I guess, on what fits in cell C nicely?
Counselor Hanson, I'll, I believe it was 600 units, I don't recall offhand, it's in the zoning bylaw. So it's 650 storage units for RV storage currently, in place right now, we have 480. Basically, we're with the first phase that we went ahead with, that's not, not conforming, we currently have 92 units. With our, our proposal is eventually is along the perimeter is convert those storage units, or those RV storage units into mini storage. It wouldn't take much to reach 580 units to.
All right, so maybe clean up the perimeter, look in lieu of trees, we have sited storage.
Exactly.
Because originally I thought perhaps we need some formula so that as you add mini storage, we reduce the amount of RV storage. Do you still think you can reach your 600 with the 580 around the perimeter and in the little mini storage in cell B?
The, the RV storage numbers that we have current, like the spots that we have available currently are 480. That would decrease, excuse me, as we, as we convert from RV storage into, into mini storage.
All right, question for administration then, do you see any issues with having two maximums and no, no balance between the two? So as you add one, you subtract the other? If we're looking for flexibility?
And through the Chair, so far, because they, once the number of RV storage reduced, the number of mini store will increase. So as I would say, there's no much concerns, because we also asked the applicant to provide the traffic impact assessment memo. To evaluate if the existing infrastructure and access can handle that proposal. The memo indicated the existing infrastructure can handle that, the increase for the mini storage.
Yeah, I read that, I understand that, but my question is a little more specific, so if we had 600 RVs parked, plus 580, so 100% build out according to the bylaw, is that what the traffic impact study anticipated, or did it anticipate foregoing some of the 600?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hanson, so the way the, the TIA was done up was they looked at trip generation based on RV storage in comparison to mini storage. And the conclusion was that mini storage actually generates less traffic than RV storage. So as a site converts over from RV storage to mini storage, the overall traffic to the site could be expected to overall decrease.
Yes, I understand that, but there's nothing saying that we're converting in the bylaw, what it's saying is there's a bunch of additional use. And there's the understanding that yes, we're going to perhaps reduce, but that's not showing in the bylaw. So there's no formula saying up to 500, you're allowed this, between five and six, something like that that would make sure that the traffic impact assessment is still valid years in the future, and all we have is two maximums.
Counselor Hanson, can I?
Sure, go ahead.
You have to ask the Reeves.
When we, if we apply for any change on our property, we have to apply for development permit. And part of the development permit process would include that we'd have to submit an updated TIA. And not only to, to Rockview County, but also to Alberta Transportation for their approvals. So if there's any concerns about traffic or so forth with any change of use on our property, that's, that's accounted for at that, that, that part of the process.
Okay, so I think we kind of asked that question earlier, is some of this determined that DP time? So traffic impact assessment, so if there is any change, then we would get another look at that. In terms of ensuring that safety is maintained on 567, etc., I thought it, lovely intersection of 22 and 567. All right, so my other line of questioning had to do with the lighting, and it was the reason for the original concern. And I looked through the bylaw and they talked about lighting, but it might have been so old, I think it was 3.4, 0.1. Don't know, do we put dark sky compliance on complex commercial buildings in cell A? I don't think so, but is, was that the spirit, do you think? And would we not want to put dark sky compliance on the new stuff we're approving today if that's kind of our new county policy? So it's more than just shielding 150 watt quartz security light and actually making it officially architecturally stamped dark sky compliant luminaire as part of the amendments today.
Yeah, through the Chair, if the council wish, we can include that amendment to the today's DC bylaw.
All right. Well, I will be making that amendment at some point, but not exactly right now, we'll let more questioning come up. But prior to approving the amendments to the bylaw, I'd like to add that one on, and hopefully we have some standard language, you know, we don't like to do this on the fly, but that's it, thank you.
Counselor Kessel.
Through the Chair to the applicant, there is one letter here, and it's again addressing the light, the lighting. And we do, do know that's been a problem in the community. Have you looked at different lighting and are, if we move this forward, are you willing to change your lights to appease your neighbors a little bit? Because they do find you a little bright.
Yes, Counselor Kessel, absolutely, we, we, like I said, we've been in business in this area for approaching, well, 14 years now. We want nothing more than to be good neighbors, I think we've shown that in the past, and we are more than willing to work with any of our neighbors. The one letter that we have had in opposition, I have been in contact with her. She did respond back to me saying that she was, from I understand, winters down in Palm Springs, and when she does get back, she'll give me a call, and I would love to have her on the property and, and, and talk with her and, and appease any issues that she has with our, our facility. The lights that we have chosen do shine down, but are quite bright, so they do go onto the highway. So we're looking at a couple of options, option one is completely replacing those fixtures with something else. Option two is we can open up the lens and actually black out a portion of lens, so less the light will shoot out and, and majority of light will shoot straight down on the property. To give us the security reasons why we need the lighting, but not to intrude on our neighbors and, and the traveling public going down the highway.
Excellent, so we. Excellent. So we can address the lighting in our DP at this time?
Through the chair, yes, we could.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. We actually got a little bit ahead of ourselves there for rebuttal and, and opposition, but we'll deal with that as, again. So if I get you to take your seat, we'll now call on those to come forward that are in favor. Anyone that's in favor would like to come forward and speak?
Yes.
Anyone in favor? Seeing no one, there was one letter of opposition that was mentioned before. And I'll tell the applicant that you do have the, the right to rebut what you've heard in opposition. But anyone else like to come forward in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Come forward, please. And anyone else in opposition? Seeing no one. Would the applicant care to further rebut what you heard, or what you read in the letter?
Just, just very simply, she, in her letter, basically stated her concerns with the lighting. And we made it very clear to her that we would work with her in any way. The second part of that letter, she, she did state concerns about the permitting process and so forth. And that, we, we take full responsibility for that. We made an assumption, because we're a storage facility, that we could put non-permanent structures, i.e. converted containers to, to use for storage. And we made that mistake. So we, we have addressed both those issues with her. And I believe she's, she's fine with it.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Through the reef to Mr. Verratt, just quickly. So I really appreciate you acknowledging that. I think that's great. And just moving forward, I guess if you're going to have any other additional businesses, just maybe call in first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I see no further questions. So thank you. Any questions to go on before we go to Counselor's Wish? Seeing none, Counselor Kissel.
Move to close.
Motion to close the hearing, all in favor? That is carried. And Counselor Kissel.
Can I get five minutes so we can just work on that lighting and have that added in there, please?
We could. You know, I would like it if council, and this is just something that I think we got to work towards, is having these motions ready and letting staff know the day in advance that we're going to have some motions to change and amend, and, and show a little independence of council to come and have your own motions ready. So if you and Counselor Hanson would like to work together on that, that'd be great.
Thank you, and duly noted.
Thank you. Go to Counselor Kissel.
Through the reef, I'd just like to clarify through administration, the lighting and how it will be addressed.
Mr. Bars?
Through the chair to council, just a bit of background. In the county plan, there is direction that requires public and business lighting in outdoor areas to be downward directed and to conform with the land use bylaw. And that comes under a general clause of maintaining dark skies. And then within the land use bylaw under Section 27, it says all, and this is reference to business development, all development shall be used full cutoff shielded outdoor light fixtures, the direct light downward. And then there's some other requirements associated with that. This application will come in for development permit. At that time, we will also be looking at landscaping plan. And we'll be able to address all of the requirements for dark sky lighting. So council could add something into the D.C. bylaw. In our opinion, it's, it's pretty well covered in the land use bylaw. And I think we're very clear on the direction as to how we will resolve the problems in this particular application.
Thank you.
Does that, do you agree with that, Counselor Kissel? And then we just go ahead?
I do. I do. I, I do believe that this, this issue will be dealt with and that the neighbors will be happy with the results. And I understand, you know, the applicant understands there will have to be changes on the lighting. So I'd like to move for option one, motion one, that bylaw C-7868-2019 be given first reading.
Motion for first reading, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Wright?
That bylaw C-7868-2019 be given second reading?
Second reading, all in favor? And that too is carried. Counselor Hanson?
I think the motion that bylaw C-7868-2019 be considered for third reading?
Consideration of third, all in favor? That is carried. And Counselor Kissel?
I'd like to move that bylaw C-7868-2019 be given third and final reading.
Third reading, all in favor? That is carried. And your amendment has been approved. We'll go to C-2, Counselor Hen.
Move to open the public hearing for item C-2.
To open the hearing, all in favor? And that is carried. Can we get the report, please?
Good morning, Mr. Reeves and members of council. Jamie Kerchuk with you, presenting on behalf of Planning and Development Services. Item C-2 is located in the Balzac East area, just north of the city of Calgary, approximately half mile south of Crossfire Drive, on the east side of Dwight-McLellan Trail. The subject lands are designated Direct Control District 99 and are currently undeveloped with a pending subdivision application, PL 20180133, to create a multi-lot business park. The purpose and intent of the Direct Control bylaw is to provide for the development of the Balzac East Special Development Area Number Four, lands which provide for the development of a commercial and light industrial uses. The purpose of the application in front of you today is a site-specific amendment to Direct Control 99, to allow for two new uses within a portion that is highlighted on the screen above you, for cannabis cultivation and cannabis facility. The amendments would be applicable on a portion of the subject lands, as shown in the highlighted area, restricting the new uses to this area and reducing the potential impact throughout the business park. The proposed new uses would be carried out within an industrial commercial building, subject to a development permit and Health Canada approvals. The site-specific amendment would be considered compatible in similar nature to the majority of uses already provided within DC 99, such as general industry type one and two. Site servicing and other technical details would be further addressed at future subdivision or development permit stages. Under seven, Section Seven of the land use bylaw, cannabis cultivation is defined as the means of growing and harvesting of cannabis as licensed by Health Canada. While cannabis facility means a development as licensed by Health Canada where cannabis is grown, harvested, processed, tested, and/or stored on site, but does not include cannabis retail store. Section 20.9 of the land use bylaw further provides regulations for the above proposed uses, and that they must also maintain a minimum separation distance of 150 meters from a healthcare site, or 100 meters from a school site. And the map above, and the dark red does show those buffers included surrounding the potential area where these new uses could be. And as the lands are currently undeveloped, there are no immediate concerns. The Rockview County City of Calgary IDP identifies the subject lands as being within the Rockview County Growth Corridor. The goals of the section are further addressed under the McClellan Business Park Conceptual Scheme and would be further addressed at future subdivision or development permit stages. The City of Calgary was circulated for comments and responded with no comments. The application was circulated to 15 adjacent Rockview County landowners and 1,887 City of Calgary residents. One letter from an adjacent Rockview County landowner and 214 letters from the City of Calgary residents, and this is largely from the communities of Redstone and Skyview Community, as shown on the screen above, outlining the landowner's concerns. And this is shown in Appendix D. The application was evaluated against the policies within the county plan, the Balzac East Area Structure Plan, and the McClellan Business Park Conceptual Scheme, and was found to be compliant. The proposed new uses are generally compatible in similar nature with the existing uses already established within cell C of the Direct Control bylaw, and site servicing and other technical details would be further addressed at future subdivision or development permit stages. And I have prepared a quick video for council's viewing. So the video begins looking north, up Range Road 292. As we pan east, McDonald Lake comes into view. As we begin to pan further south, the City of Calgary boundary would be about a half a mile down Range Road 292, a little bit out of sight. And as we make our way back west, there's an existing oil and gas operation. And then as we just get further past it, the subject lands come into view, which are, again, currently undeveloped. And making our way back north brings us full circle. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now call on the applicant to come forward and tell us about the amendment. You have 20 minutes. State your name for the record, please, and carry on.
Good morning, Mr. Reeves, members of council. My name is Mike Coldwell. I'm with Urban Systems. Today, I'm joined by Jeff Petrick of Pacific, a landowner of the property. Thank you for hearing us this morning. And I did want to thank administration for working with us through this application process. It's been excellent working with them. The application we have before us today, as Mr. Kerchuk stated, was, is a site-specific amendment to Direct Control District 99. Purpose and intent of the district is to provide for the development of the Balzac East Special Development Area, lands for commercial and light industrial uses that do not impact adjacent development. As stated by administration, this application is in compliance with the Balzac East ASP, as well as the McClellan Business Park Conceptual Scheme. As you see in front of you, this is the development concept from the McClellan Business Park Conceptual Scheme. The lands highlighted in red to the east side of the plan area are the lands that are subject to this particular site-specific amendment. The McClellan Business Park Conceptual Scheme supports intensification of industrial activities in this area of Balzac through the development of an orderly, fully serviced industrial and business campus. Here's shown the entirety of Direct Control District 99. We're talking about a very small portion of the entire DC district. We did this such as to reduce the potential for impacts throughout the entire DC. We wanted to concentrate the availability of these uses for these particular proposed lots only. Looking at the, the specific uses that we are proposing, these were included into Rockview County's land use bylaw back in November of 2018. They are cannabis cultivation and cannabis facility. Cannabis cultivation means the Cannabis cultivation means the growing and harvesting of cannabis is licensed by Health Canada, and cannabis facility means a development as licensed, again, by Health Canada, where cannabis is grown, harvested, processed, tested, destroyed, and/or stored on-site, but does not include cannabis retail stores. We did not choose to include the retail store component, as we felt it was completely incompatible here, and only the facility and the cultivation uses are being proposed. As stated by administration as well, there are, I apologize, this is a small writing to read off the screen, but this is an excerpt of Section 20.9, the Cannabis Cultivation and Cannabis Facility Development Regulations from the Land Use Bylaw. And I've highlighted there for us the setbacks that are required from any specific uses, as administration already stated. We are well outside of any of these setback areas of residential sites, school sites, or healthcare facilities. This is an ideal location that exceeds any of those minimum setback requirements in fair excess. I wanted to thank council for their support this morning. I wanted to highlight for you, by supporting this Direct Control District site-specific amendment, you will be supporting business diversification, you'll be supporting compatible industrial development in this particular area, you'll be supporting expedient development of this area of the Balzac Industrial, you'll be supporting a strong pool of anchor tenants and/or users for the McClellan Business Park, and supporting growth in a planned and approved area of the county. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. We'll now go to questions of the applicant or administration. Counselor Kissel?
Through the Reeve, you just stated that this was going to be a fully serviced development. Where's your servicing coming from?
Through the Reeve, servicing is coming from municipal services for both water and sanitary.
Okay. And this question is actually for administration. We have a large number of letters in opposition. Are all of them from the City of Calgary residents, or any of them from Rockview County?
Through the chair to Counselor Kissel, there's 214 letters from the City of Calgary residents, primarily Skyview and Redstone. There is one letter from Rockview County landowner in opposition as well.
Okay. So I know I'm going to kind of ask you a question that you're gonna, it's going to be hard to answer, but is there any reason that the City of Calgary chose not to comment? Because that's what it stated, that they did not comment, yet they had a large contingency of their own residents opposed. Any insight on that?
Through the chair to Counselor Kissel, although I won't be able to speak on behalf of the City of Calgary administration, they would have taken into consideration the Rockview County and City of Calgary intermunicipal development plan, and the intermunicipal development plan does identify the subject lands as being within the Rockview County corridor. And being that the Balzac East Area Structure Plan and McClellan Business Park are already approved, area structure plan and conceptual schemes which identify commercial industrial land uses, it could be suggested that this type of use is being carried out in accordance with those plans.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, roughly, how far is it from the south end of the proposed amendment to a residential property? Do we know, just plus or minus a little bit?
May I? Or, sorry.
Yeah, whoever.
Thank you. Glad you asked. We did a whole pile of research, Mr. Reeve. To your, to answer your question, we've estimated that it's in excess of 1 kilometer to the nearest possible resident. We're not certain as to exactly which residents had opposed, as their personal information has been removed from the letters, but it is in excess of 1 kilometer. I would remind council again, the minimum setback distance is from residential properties is 100 meters, and so we're more than 10 times as far as we need to be.
Thank you. Would you have a question? Counselor Hanson?
Yes. Can we bring up the slide again that showed kind of the overview with those two communities, Stony Trail? Right. So my question through the Reeve, maybe to administration, is do we know what the zoning is in the city directly on across from this business park between Stony Trail and Rockview County?
Can we jump back to my presentation? Through the Reeve, I'm also glad you asked that question, because we did a whole pile of research there as well. So we've actually mapped all land uses within the City of Calgary, north of Country Hills Boulevard, and in between Deerfoot and Stony Trail to the east. We've identified on this particular map, and I hope you can all see it clearly, all the uses in red are land uses that allow cannabis stores, so that's the retail component. And anything you see in green allows cannabis facilities, and that's, the City of Calgary defines them a little bit differently than Rockview. A facility is where you can both grow and process, whereas Rockview's bylaw has split those two uses. So anything that's shown as IG District, or shown in green on this particular map, is a space that can already be applied for as a discretionary use for a cannabis facility. And so you'd actually see if I may bring your focus to this particular parcel, for example, is one which is directly in between the community of Redstone and the subject site, that is already zoned for cannabis facilities. Never mind the large swath of industrial general land directly to the west that is, again, already zoned for cannabis facilities.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, because the question I had, if you bring up the slide with your red setbacks, was given how minimally it impacts, but the fact that it does impact what's going on in the city, why would we not just back off so that 150 meters was basically our county border? But if they've already got designated cannabis facilities in the area that this would intrude upon, then I think it's a moot point.
I guess that was a comment, not a question.
Yes. So would you agree that?
I would agree that it's a moot point, through the Reeve.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Wright?
Just for clarification, through the Reeve, what is that to the bottom of the, the south end of the proposed development? Like, there's a building there that seems to go into, what is it?
Through the Reeve...
The buffer goes through, yes, that, yes.
I believe that's, through the Reeve, I believe that's industrial storage within an adjacent site.
Oh, industrial storage, thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions, so we'll go to the part of the hearing that calls on those in favor to come forward. Anyone in favor like to come forward? And anyone in favor? And I believe we had a few letters of, there was a letter, I believe, in favor. We do need a motion for a late letter in opposition. If I could get a motion for that before we go to those in opposition. Counselor Hen?
I move to accept the late letter.
Okay, all in favor? We need a recorded vote?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
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 In favor.
In favor.
And that carries. So we'll get that letter circulated. Now we'll call on those, oh, sorry, we got to stick with in favor, oh, Mike Coldwell has already, he is in favor, we know that. Those in opposition, and if you sign this, come up and tell us your name, because I can't, sorry, I just cannot interpret this. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Morning, council. My name is Jignesh, and I'm resident of Redstone Community. The similar facilities are having the bylaw and those all things that we understand, and this is good thing. But in the current scenario, we are seeing some issues raised by the communities, or some issues are faced by nearby residents. So these type of issues are happening in southern Ontario, and the same thing had happened recently in Edmonton, where the Edmonton Airport is having this type of issue, the stinky smell is coming into that area. And this project was completed by Aurora in January. After January, they had like installed two new exhausts unit to deodorize, 800 HVAC filters throughout the processing area, and 1,360 pocket filters throughout the growing area. Still, the stinky smell is going on the airport. That is the recent issue raised in the article of the newspaper. And this is creating, like, all community members are not happy with this type of facility coming to near the residence. This is the latest case. So these are the issues coming up in the newspapers by community members where this type of facilities are there.
And is that, yeah, completes your presentation?
Yeah, that's complete.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Gattrow has a question?
Thank you, through the chair. Excuse me, sir.
Sir, you'd have to, he has a question for you, I believe.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Thank you, through the chair. We noticed on a map that was provided to council and to administration, where the City of Calgary even has areas really next door to your community that would allow this...
That we were not aware, yeah.
Same type of operation. So I'm just wondering how you feel about that. So as you can see on that map, I mean, really, it's right on the doorstep of your community as well, where, now, we were told, and I'm assuming that this to be true, that they could just go ahead and start building right in these areas here without any type of other approvals?
We were not aware about this facility. Today only, we are getting this information. Second thing, like, it may be something which was not consulted with the community properly, and it may have got approved, but we were not consulted for this approval.
Okay. And the second question I have for you is, you're bringing, you brought a news article talking about filtration system.
Yes.
And I haven't asked the applicant what their filtration system might even be, but so is there, is there a different filtration system that's out there through your research that will actually stop some of the odor?
They are trying to, like, in Edmonton, they are trying to stop the smells, but they are unable to. They are trying with different filter, different HVAC system, and different pocket filters, but still it is not working. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions, so you can take your seat.
Thank you.
And the next person that is down on the list, the only thing I make out here is landowner. Yep, go ahead and come forward and just state your name for the record, please.
I come so often here, I will learn all this. My name is Monica Cummings. I used to be Monica Ambrosic when I complained before. My issue is now, from the previous complaint, that was 0.8K away from my land, what they wanted to build, the building was already built, but they were going to lease it for this purpose for cannabis. I complained because it was very close, and it was close to retail and a school and all that. Now these people, they move next door to me. Where you see that red circle where they had that, they are already in the land, and I am the subject, where it says the subject area. If that is moved a little to the north, they are already, the storage is on my neighbor, which is my ex-husband, that we split the land between us. And I am the square, the 50 acres. So they are smack next to me now. The complaint is, okay, the square that you see, that, that, that's 50 acres, that's my land. And the land around me is my ex-husband, and I just saw for the first time, there is a line, the red that shows, and the gentleman says, Mr. Coldwell says, that that was a storage, south, but also goes north, which is in the land. So that is smack next to me. And I didn't know about a storage to be built right next to it, which we are so close anyway. My point is, Rocky View has already designated for cannabis, and I have a big hole in my heart for that, but I can't do anything about it. For this land that I have, I have no chance of selling if that skunk smell really comes here. They're not talking about producing just medical marijuana, this is going to be exporting marijuana, and it's going to be a big time of production. Nobody is talking about the filtration. It doesn't matter how much even they spend, 800, whatever, thousands of filters, it's still smell you cannot bottle in a bottle and throw it away. It still will come out. But also, they're not talking about disposal. Where is the disposal going to be? And we know how toxic that would be. Would that, will I be getting environmental report what is happening? We are on a borderline. They are next to me. What chance do I have to sell my land, which I do appreciate was said, it's away from retail, away from school, there is nothing in the area, excuse me? Rocky View takes land for a future development. I want Rocky View to consider also a landowner smack next to a grower. What chance do I have to sell my land, and to whom will I sell my land? I'm waiting 50 years to sell that land, and still don't have a chance, because I have another skunk smell next to me, and it was next to him before, with the sulfur, for 50 years. So it is not nowhere, it's not in a no-name land. I think this grow up, we can stop it. It's legal now. But it should be somewhere away from residential, it should be in some unknown place where nobody will bother them, and nobody will smell it. And they can produce it because it's for export, too. Thank you for listening to me again. I don't think I have another chance. I am really smack now next to them, and I don't know what to do about it. I am deadly against.
And thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any questions? Counselor Gattrow?
Thank you, through the chair. Can you tell me what your land is zoned currently today?
It is on, it's 99 DC, it's a commercial DC, and it says for cannabis, too, storages and whatnot, but it's there. But it is already, that red circle that they had, it's already on the land. The previous, what they say, south was the...
So you're in the, you're in the DC 99?
One of the ladies here, they said, what was that, north? No, south. Okay.
Okay. So I see on the map here that it's currently zoned DC 99 as well. Okay, thank you.
Could, could I ask that either the applicant or administration clarify what that buffer zone limits?
Buffer, yes.
I believe Ms. Cummings may have a little issue with understanding what can go in there and what can't. So if we could get a little explanation for that, it'd probably be very helpful.
To the Reeve, just to clarify on the Direct Control 99, she is within Direct Control 99, but a different cell. This proposal is to amend Cell C, so her cell would be unaffected by this specific site amendment today. And then in regards to the, I believe, the development area with buffers, this slide, just to speak to this in a little bit more detail, the red outline shows 100 meters and 150 meters respectively, and there is a land use bylaw requirement that cannabis facility and cannabis cultivation cannot be located within 100 meters and 150 meters within a school site, healthcare site, or residential site. And so this buffer shows the 100 meter and 150 meters respectively, and the intent of this map is to indicate that there is, in fact, no residential site or healthcare/school site within the 100 meters or 150 meters.
Thank you. And I will say, Mr. Coldwell, you'll get a chance to rebuttal. So does that clarify a little bit for you?
This is, this is ridiculous. It is absolutely... It is absolutely the way I understand it. I may be interpreting wrong in my head. Are you saying this is away from school and retail, so big deal whoever that land, it's the only land left in Balzac, that my land? And you think I'm not affected by it? I mean, isn't it that Rocky-
If I could just, uh-
-be taken into consideration for the future?
Okay, hang on, hang on.
Sorry.
Uh, this was to clarify for you, and I, I believe he did a great job of clarifying. You can't have a school, and you can't have a healthcare, and you can't have a residence within that red boundary. So it doesn't affect your land at all.
But it's my property. It's not my land, you're saying? It is-
It doesn't.
But it, well, if they're taking that in consideration, well, that is only maybe, uh, uh, not even fifteen feet away from my, my square, my fifty acres.
I, I think significantly more, but I'm not gonna argue the point with you.
I appreciate it.
I tried to clarify for you, so, thank you.
Okay, so in my understanding is that somebody is paying for that, that they are into the property? Or that is something for a future consideration in the red?
It's a future consideration of development. You can't, within that red, you're not allowed to put a school, or a healthcare facility, or a residence, within the red.
So this is a new rule now? Because that's somebody else's land? You see the, where the, they're crossing already in somebody else's land?
That's a, that's a setback that is just generally accepted, uh, development practice, so.
Wow.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Wright.
Ms. Cum- Mrs. Cummings, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Hi. Do you, I'm just looking at that picture. Do you have a, do you live on that land?
No, no, I don't.
No.
It's not for residential, uh, to build there.
So you don't live there?
No, you cannot live there. I only, it's a farmer, we have a farmer that is doing right now-
So you lease it?
Lease it, yes.
Okay.
Yearly.
But you do understand that it's zoned for light industrial, and that at some point in time, you can change it to that, correct? Or you can, I, I'm just a little bit at a loss to understand, if you don't live there and it's already zoned for industrial use, what's, I, I'm not quite understanding.
And, and my concern is only what a person will buy the property when they are next to a skunk smell.
Okay, thank you.
That's all it is. I wish they moved here closer. Everybody will be hard here.
Okay, thank you, you've, uh, you've made your point, and we understand.
I thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now call on anyone else in opposition that would like to come forward. Is there anyone would like to come forward in opposition? One more time, anyone in opposition, please come forward. Seeing no one, uh, there was two hundred and fourteen or fifteen letters, I guess, with the new one, uh, so you do have an opportunity to rebut. Do you need time to prepare a rebuttal? If you'd come forward, uh, if you want to rebut, and tell us about your rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and members of council, again, Mike Caldwell. Um, we fully appreciate there is a fair bit of opposition, uh, from the city of Calgary, the two hundred and fifteen letters that we've seen. I don't want to dismiss their concerns because they are valid concerns for these types of facilities. Uh, we've seen challenges elsewhere across the country, and I believe, as you stated earlier, Mr. Reeve, uh, some of those issues and many of those issues are development permit issues, and we fully recognize that they need to be dealt with, and they will be dealt with at the appropriate time in the development process. Uh, we contend very strongly that the development permit process is the time to deal with those, uh, and we have to work, work with administration and the community at that point, uh, to, uh, ensure that the facilities are being built to all of Rocky View and Health Canada's standards at that point. Um, I did have one point of clarification, um, with the setbacks that you see on the screen, uh, those within section twenty point nine of the land use bylaw, uh, are from the facility itself, not from a parcel, and so the facility itself needs to be set back from a site. And so, uh, again, at the development permit stage, we need to make sure that we are in compliance with those particular setbacks, and the facility that could be built here one day, uh, needs to be set back by the hundred and, a hundred and fifty meters respectively. Uh, and then further, last point I do have is, uh, as was mentioned, um, the, the sites to, directly to our north are within a direct control district, uh, for DC ninety-nine. They are already zoned for industrial, commercial uses. Uh, there is, uh, there are a whole pile of, uh, DC ninety-nine uses that may have off-site impacts that we could see on either this parcel, other parcels, anywhere within DC ninety-nine, uh, this, this particular cell. So, uh, just recognizing, a home can never be built there, uh, a school will likely never be built there, a healthcare facility will likely never be built there either, and so we're very comfortable that these setbacks, uh, are, um, we're very comfortable with them, I should say. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Counselor Hanson.
Uh, one question through the Reeve, um, to Mr. Caldwell, and this is probably a question for later on, but I wouldn't mind a bit of, uh, foreshadowing, just so I can ponder this over the next months, but, um, in terms of water and sewage usage and intensity, um, any rough idea of what kind of factor of intensity we're looking at for a grow-up versus of the, the rest of the business park? Um, what should the administration be anticipating as the ask in terms of servicing? Just in rough terms.
Uh, through the Reeve, to Counselor Hanson, uh, because we are at the land use stage, we have not done the specific assessments for a facility because we don't know the, the use or intensity of that particular potential facility. Uh, what I can say is that these types of operations, uh, basically demand the highest efficiency of, of water and wastewater usage, um, because of the intense agricultural, uh, component to it. Uh, they want to be sort of the best agricultural producers they possibly can, so I can't give you, uh, ballpark numbers at this point, I might defer to administration to, to talk about capacities within the particular system, um, but it's, it's too early at this point to, to speculate.
All right. Well, it's heartening to see that you're thinking of that anyway. Thank you.
Thank you again. I see no further questions. Uh, Counselors' wish.
We've moved to close.
Moved to close the hearing, all in favor? That is carried. Counselor Hen.
Um, I don't see a need for much discussion on this, so I'd just like to move that bylaw C dash seven eight seven two, test two zero one nine, be given first reading.
Thank you. We'll call the question, Counselor Hanson.
Well, there's always opportunity for a good discussion on things or governance, but, um, I'll be supporting first reading.
Thank you for clarifying our role. All in favor? That is carried, and Deputy Reeve Shul.
I'll move that, uh, bylaw C seven eight seven two, two thousand nineteen, be given second reading.
Second reading, all in favor? And that two is carried. Uh, Counselor Gattrow.
Uh, that bylaw C seven eight seven two, two thousand nineteen, be considered for third reading, and just to comment here, um, you know, I know this is at land use right now, but I think the applicant has heard that, you know, filtration systems eventually is, is gonna be a, are all part of that at DP, and, uh, you know, I, I think they, I think they get it, so I'm supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? That is carried, and Counselor Hen. Oh, we got Counselor Hanson. Right in the middle of motions, I, this is kind of oblong here, so I hope this is really cutting edge. Counselor Hen. Oh, you shut it off.
I move that bylaw C dash seven eight seven two, dash two zero one nine, be given third and final reading.
Third reading, all in favor? That is carried. So, your application has been passed. Does anyone need a break? Five minutes. Okay?
I'll call the meeting back to order and we'll go back to D1 if we can get a motion to lift from the table. Counselor Hanson.
I'd like to make a motion to lift D1 from the table.
Thank you, all in favor. That is carried. And Mr. Hogan for some clarification, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Just some clarification, there was some talk on procurement that, and I'm not sure, I made it clear when I spoke earlier, the purchasing procurement policy does allow for sole sourcing. It applies to goods and services when there's potentially three separate issues, no competitive market, uniqueness of the product or vendor limitations. So there is a, there is a methodology through the procurement policy to allow sole sourcing. Just thought I would clarify that for council.
So could I ask then, when the first 60,000 was allocated, was that triple sourced or put out for an RFP? If we could let administration answer, that would be real helpful.
To the Reeve, the first project approval was done via sole source.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Shul.
Well, I just need to make a comment from some of the discussions that were had on this before. There was talk about bias and everything else. Well, I just want to say at the end of the day, it's council that makes the decision whether, who we, who gets it and what happens with this here. So, I don't know, I just wanted to, I think I just had to speak that we shouldn't be talking about some, one being biased or anything on this here because it's council's decision at the end.
Thank you. If we could carry on, Counselor Wright.
Through the chair, my comments to bias are, is if, and I don't quite understand where you're going with that, Counselor Shul, is that if we hear from one particular group and this does go out to tender, then are we considered, if we end up giving these guys the contract, is there an implication of bias? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. If we can carry on, Mr. Nelson. Do you know where we were?
To you, Mr. Reeve.
Other than lost in the forest?
I think I've got some sense of where we were and I also have some regrettable news that the members of the Brad Creek Committee and their consultant were unable to carry on with us. And therefore, we don't have the benefit of their expertise on any of the discussion about what they're bringing to the table other than their proposal that they previously submitted. But I'm at your disposal if you've got any more questions about the report itself.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kessel.
I just have a, through the Reeve, I have a question. I understood that this was to be done in-house and that we weren't sourcing it out for that 60,000. That was the allotment that we would use to have the work done. I guess I'm a little bit confused on why it didn't go out, forbid then, and follow the actual process.
Yeah, I'm going to help staff out a little bit here. If you go to the motions, Counselor Kessel, it goes through and we're actually, I think we spent about $6,000 so far. We're going to put 54,000 towards our part of the 80, or the 165. And it's contingent upon the grant being given. So we have, there is a proposal to change from in-house to going to a different, and that kind of self-explains in the motions. And that, I'm just trying to move this thing ahead here. It's, it is, it was supposed to be done in-house, we're changing direction, or there's a proposal to change direction. And just read the motions and you'll, you'll see it. We'll come back to you, Counselor Comachi.
Through the chair, thank you. Mr. Nelson, given that, you know, you, your team had started doing the internet research, now having seen Jennifer Massek's presentation, do you feel that it would be a waste of, of dollars if we would continue to spend the rest of that 60 based on what you've learned from, from what the Brad Creek group has brought forward?
Through the Reeve, Counselor Comachi, I think I'll try and summarize this in what I think council's after is, is kind of a value discussion and, and where the county would be at the end of both projects and how that then relates to the value that not only you've approved and the project plan and scope, but what you're entertaining for approval today. What you approved previously, and I just want to clarify, I've brought the February 26 report and it clearly states in it that the county was going to use a consultant. In administration's opinion, based on the timelines and some of the sentiment, we felt that it was expedient and absolutely beneficial for us to sole source that consultant. So that's what we did. And we got the project started right away and we started the first steps of that Phase One. What we also articulated in that February 26 report is it would bring you to a high-level assessment, which was clearly in keeping with the notice of motion. And I think what council saw at that time was that that was acceptable and therefore proved it, that we do get a high-level assessment about the technologies, you'd get the discussion with the ISPs, what are they doing in the areas, where do we not want to maybe engage and overlap with them, where can we let kind of an organic approach occur where it necessarily would occur anyways, and where the county can maybe deploy some policy tools to see broadband internet flourish countywide. What came to us after the fact was that a group in Brad Creek had already projected in their own area, using their own funds, that they would do a much deeper dive and engage a consultant to give them shovel-ready engineering preliminary reports that would then support a community-based initiative where they would see broadband in their community. We thought about it clearly and certainly after seeing the proposal by Taylor Warwick earlier, that they would go much deeper than the county's project was going to be and that we were going to come back hopefully before the October deadline and give council a general understanding of the project with some high-level costs, what the outcomes would be, and then ask council for likely another decision, do we go deeper for a project-ready, shovel-ready report with engineering drawings ready for application to a third party for the funds that would be required to deploy it? That was the limit of our project and the monies that were assigned to it. What you're now getting an opportunity to decide on is would you like to go deeper using this group, but their experts to look broadly across the county and bring you a much deeper project, albeit at a greater cost. They've also brought to us new information that previously we didn't believe or understand to be accurate, that a provincial funding grant would help us offset 50% of those costs. So there's two different projects at play here. One was previously approved, is shallor assessment. The next one that you're looking at today might give you a much deeper opportunity and an opportunity to then apply grants, but at a slightly greater cost and a little bit of a delay. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Is Ms. Massek available to come today to present?
Through the Reeve, Counselor Comachi, unfortunately, they, they only allocated this morning and had to leave following our delay.
Through, through the Reeve, sorry. Could I still make these options that are in front of us?
Motions, absolutely. If you care to make a motion, go ahead.
That administration be directed to discontinue Phase One of the internet servicing strategy, pay all outstanding costs, and assign the remaining funds to the new community broadband study project. That an application be made to the 2019 Community and Regional Economic Support CARES Program requesting 50% of the total estimated program cost. And that subject to the successful award of a CARES grant amounting to not less than 50% of project costs, an amount not to exceed $28,500 be assigned to the Brad Creek Community Broadband Study Project and funded from the tax stabilization reserves as attachments see.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Comachi, if you could give up your...
Oops, sir.
Counselor Wright.
Through the Reeve. So I just need some clarification. So assuming this goes through, is it going through with the exact work plan that is presented here today? Because I do have some concerns about who the pilot area is going to be. Is that fair that it's Brad Creek? I realize that this initiative came out of Brad Creek, but do we have other areas that would be better suited, that have higher populations, that might be a little easier to do, maybe less cost-effective? The other thing, or more cost-effective rather, the only other thing I have is this particular study seems to indicate a heavy bias towards fiber optic. And one of the things I believe you, Mr. Nelson, said in the last presentation is that we do, in order to service rural areas, it's not just going to be fiber optic, that we have to be realistic in, in understanding that many of these more rural areas could potentially be on satellite or, or other potential options. So I just need some clarification on if this goes through, is it this work plan or will we be working with the group to identify what that work plan would be?
Through the Reeve, Counselor Wright, this is the work plan that has been submitted for council's consideration with the value assigned to it. But what Jennifer Massek with Magus Engineering shared with me before leaving was that they were accepting of the idea that we would do a gate approach so that at each step, we could possibly report back, report our findings, get a go-ahead to proceed to the next gate. I don't think that that would necessarily impose a great deal much more time, but it may give a council, a council much more comfort to know that in your example, if a pilot project was proposed, is that the one based on the merits of all the study and the research and the funding potentially? Is that the one we do? Or would council like to go in another direction based on that information? So I think I can comfortably offer that to you today, that if this was elected to be the path we take, that we could impose some gates there, subject to council's further consideration.
Deputy Reeve Shul.
Thank you. Through the chair. Originally, I had trouble with this project here, but now, after listening, and this is to me, it almost sounds like we're going to speed up the process because we're actually going to be doing, because what I heard, that once we'd done our first 60,000 and then you had been coming back for another report, this one seems like we're doing Phase One and Phase Two at the same time. So if anything else, we're actually speeding up the process. I'm fully supportive of this.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Well, through the Reeve, I have a different opinion. I think this is actually slowing down our process because we won't be able to start on it until September. So I'm curious why we aren't considering looking at the CARES program as a nice-to-have and not a must-have. Because if it's, if we don't get it, then we're basically where we sit today. Only it'll be September. So I'm really, really, really confused what the benefit of that is. When we think we're already behind and this is limiting not only the ability to people to do their homework on time in Brad Creek, but also the build-out of East Balzac and other industrial areas that require really good connectivity. So I'm curious why we aren't debating looking at this as either 160 or $200,000 project, whatever. Part of the 60,000 was to determine exactly what this needs to be and do our homework properly, talk to three different people, and come back with three different things that we could be looking at. What concerns me is stuff like feasibility study, 1C stakeholder engagement workshop, one-day facilitated stakeholder engagement workshop to confirm alignment with key stakeholders and set high-level strategic goals for the project. That's a little diminutive in my thinking. Where are you going to have that? County Hall? One evening?
Counselor Hanson, can you direct your comments towards the motion?
I am. The last part that says, and that subject to the successful award of a CARES grant. So my comment is in direct response to that.
Public consultation isn't mentioned in any of the motions. So carry on.
So, this looks like a convenience to me. I don't think we've thought through this deeply enough. And I'm concerned that this puts the brakes on an important piece of business that we, as the county needed to take care of. And we won't be seeing any progress until September.
Thank you. Counselor Comachi, can you give up the mic and when it comes to you, you can close. Counselor McKyler.
Thank you, through the chair. I totally understand this is a zig from our path and, and I get that. But at the end of the day, we weren't going to get what we needed, I don't believe, Kim McKyler's opinion only. I think we were going to get something that was pretty high-level in October. And we have an opportunity to get something, I think, that's a lot more useful to our residents in the long run. And so I think that is of value. I do want to make sure, and again, my, my biggest concern is that it's not biased towards Brad Creek, that we look, we're looking at the county as a whole through this and that, because there may be better areas to pilot than Brad Creek, I don't know. But I want, you know, that, again, that as I asked before, that we're in the driver's seat of this report. We've got care of the whole county at our hearts here. And, and while, you know, Brad Creek is an important part of our, our county, every, every other councillor here has important areas as well. So I want to make sure that, again, that we're going through this, I think scrubbed of Brad Creek and we're going this as a countywide project and that we're driving it. And I think then it's, it's, it's good money spent. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Wright.
I will not be supporting the motion. The county can get the CARES funding without this group. We can apply ourselves. I think we can put it out to tender. I think we can go the proper route. It might be this group that ends up with the sourcing. But between now and October, I think we can definitely come up with a better plan. I think you can continue working where you're going. It does dismay me that this was put on hold for three weeks while this was debated and that you've only spent the $6,000. But I understand that you were given a direction. It's interesting, I don't know where that direction came from. However, it was given and it has been put on hold because that now puts us three weeks behind. Once again, I would imagine it's probably one councillor making a decision. But I won't be supporting the motion.
Excuse me? Well, that's, I'm going to shut off this kind of talk from now on. If you really believe you, you have a process to go through here, but you are not going to be throwing staff under the bus or council. If you don't have any proof, then be quiet. We'll go to Counselor Gattro.
Thank you. You know...
I can invoke Section 67 of the procedural bylaw if you can't be quiet. Do you want that?
Can we take five minutes?
And I believe we're at Counselor Gattro.
Thank you. So in the spirit of the, of council, and when this motion came forward, I must say at the time, you know, I was saying $60,000, that's a lot of money. And today, I see even more money. However, I think we need to move things forward in the interest of council and what the project was. So I'm going to be supporting this motion. I don't, anywhere in the document, unless staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see anywhere in here where it says Brad Creek would be the pilot project. I think it was, came from a Brad Creek Connect Committee. And I think just Brad Creek is the name. And then, you know, we all have names. I come from Eastridge, Division Five, Langdon, just because it's the Connect Committee that came up with, with the start of this with their own money, which I congratulate them on of trying to get things going. So I do feel that there is a spirit of council here, that we can move things forward. Maybe we don't even need the CARES grant, maybe we can apply for it, maybe not. That's going to be Mr. Counselor Comachi's thing if he wants to change any of that. But I'm looking at this as we're putting another $28,500 to move this forward, to have something that could be better than what we directed administration to. I'm looking at these reports that these would be shovel-ready, engineered plans, ready to go. I don't think we would have got that with our $60,000. So I do believe that would probably cost us more money to get there. So I'm going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kessel.
Through the Reeve. Part of this motion I, I actually do support. The part I don't is that I think it needs to go through the bid process. And if the Brad Creek Community Broadband Study Project, if that group then ends up with it, that's great. But I think we have to follow process. And this is a large sum of money. And I think in the matter of transparency, it should be open for all. Otherwise, there's lots of good stuff here, but I think we're missing one major factor in this, is it needs to go out for bid.
Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll go to Counselor Comachi to close.
Through the chair. I do wish to my fellow councillors that Jennifer Massek, Taylor Warwick, and Magina could be here to present because they're the experts in the field. They're the top rung. They're working with all kinds of municipalities to bring internet through rural Alberta. And so they're the ones who definitely would probably float to the top in, in the research we do. That being said, the, as Counselor Gattro pointed out, the Brad Creek is a misnomer in that sense. You know, yeah, the group started there, but this group consists of professionals in the IT business. They bring experience from around the world. You know, there's a gentleman sitting out there right now and he's brought in information from working in Australia. So the group collectively is ace in terms of bringing knowledge. So this would certainly speed up the process and save us time and taxpayer monies by, by implementing what they have learned. And at the end of the day, this study is for all of Rocky View and it's always been stressed, pilot project could be happening in Bear's Paw, not Brad Creek. It could be happening anywhere where it's first needed. So that was one of the mandates. And, and also the fact that it may, it may come back and say, it's too costly for Rocky View to implement. It's a go-no-go project. But they're going to look at every facet of our community, our county, to see where internet could be provided. So with that said, I'll close.
Thank you. Call the question, all in favor. And recorded vote, we'll start with Counselor Comachi.
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Opposed.
Opposed.
And that is carried. Thank you. I could make a suggestion here for this group to come to a July, or June or July GPC meeting. If, if we want to hear a presentation from them, that could be, if somebody puts a bug in your ear, they can apply for it. So let's go to D2. Is Mr. Smith in the hall? I don't see him. Is there anyone can do this for the fire guardians?
Through the Reeve, item D3 is here and I could go get Mr. Smith if you like.
Okay, we'll go to, can we go to D3? Or maybe we better leave that one till after lunch? lunch? This isn't a public hearing. I'm getting tired of this. Every time they wanna come talk.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
The item before you right now is the Janet Area Structure Plan Amendment focusing on the long-term development area. The Janet ASP is outlined in orange. The area under consideration for the proposed ASP amendment is the green-hatched area, which is the long-term development area. The ASP was adopted in 2014. At this time, administration has determined that moving forward with the long-term development area is appropriate. In terms of the scope of work for the amendments to the ASP, um, they will be developer-funded and will involve community and stakeholder engagement, as well as intermunicipal coordination with Calgary and Chestermere. Technical studies will include traffic impact assessment and fire suppression system strategy, as well as land use strategy and consideration of higher-order documents such as the IGP and the county plan. At this time, council can consider the following options. One is approving the terms of reference as provided in Appendix A, or council can provide alternative direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bars. That was okay. Councillor Grotro.
Well, thank you. Through the Chair. Um, I, what I'd like to, to see or explore is at this particular time, uh, you know, I know the, the Phase One of Janet is, is almost gone or sold out, or however we wanna classify that. Um, but I'd really like to see is some other areas possibly put into this. So opening up some of the areas across and fixing some issues, uh, across the 566 or Glenmore Trail, as, as I'll call it, to the south, and possibly, uh, a few other sections to the east. Um, now, I, I do have some sections that, that I could probably fa- or say here, but, uh, you know, I, I'd like to see administration, maybe if I can just put it to a motion first and kinda go through that way and maybe talk about it that way. Mr. Reeve, um, I'd like to see that administration be directed to access the potential effects and considerations of expanding the Janet Area Structure Plan based on the inclusion of Sections 22, 23, or sorry, Sections 21, 22, 23, and 26 of Township 23, Range 28, west of the Fourth Meridian, and report to, back to council by May 28th, 2019. Now, that doesn't mean that these areas can go in. I'd just like to explore to see if we could put them in and what the potential of the outcome might be if they are in. We have a lot of areas out there that are pressure points, and I'm just looking at, is, is this, or could this be the time to include these areas for potentially fixing some of these, um, pressure points? Um, that's my motion. I, I don't know. There may be questions. I'll give up my mic.
Thank you. I have a question. Are those sections within the area structure plan?
Uh, through the Reeve, I do have mapping which might help to illustrate the areas in question.
Yeah, if you could do that and point them out. Councillor Maciler.
Thank you. Through the Chair, uh, through the councillor Grotro. Um, are these two separate items, or is, is the, um, is the item D3, is that, is that one item that we need to consider here today, in your opinion, or is it, or like, are you trying to combine them, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Thank you. Councillor Grotro.
Thank you. Uh, I guess I'm looking at, uh, to combine, I mean, we're gonna be opening up, uh, the new Janet Area Structure Plan, which is gonna be developer-funded. I understand that. However, I'm looking at possibly adding some new areas, uh, to this area structure plan that have current pressure points. And again, I have no clue if this can be done. Um, you know, I'm just hoping that administration comes back on May 28th and, and says that this can or cannot be done. Um, I'm just looking at all these pressure points. So if we look at the, the map that, uh, that they put on, on the screen, it's in the yellow, I'm taking it, is the areas.
Correct. Those are the Sections 21, 22, 23, and 26.
So these are the areas that we have current pressure points on, and that seems a lot has been coming to council. Um, so, you know, looking at that, uh, this map, I, I figured if we could add these on, or a potential to see if they could be added on, uh, this could be the time now to be looking at this. And maybe it's, maybe administration comes back and says, absolutely you cannot. So really what I'm trying to do is, I guess, ask for a one-month delay on it, on decision of these terms of reference to see if this actually can happen.
Councillor Wright.
Through the Reeve. Um, to the two councillor Grotro's motion, can I hear from administration if this is typically how we go about expanding lands within an ASP, or do we typically not just go out to the public and do public engagement? Um, I'm noticing that his request is for about four sections. The current Janet ASP is only nine sections, well, eight complete ones and two halves combined. So we're almost expanding it by 50%. So just get some feedback on that, please.
So our original request was to, um, address the long-term development area, um, within the area structure plan. And the proposed, uh, additional areas are not within the area structure plans. Obviously, administration would have to, um, go back and, and work out some things, how we'd need to amend the Jan- the Janet ASP in order to include those, and how, um, the method of engagement, and what additional technical studies would be required. So, um, administration hasn't, uh, put together a scope of everything that would be required to do that, but certainly, um, there would be procedures and engagement and amendment requirements that would go along with that. So approval of the change would not put it in motion. We would have to return with, um, a different terms of reference that outline what would need to occur as we've sort of done today, uh, with the new area.
Uh, Deputy Reeve Shul. Could we hear from Mr. Bars first?
Um, through the Chair, also to councillor Wright. So you're not, by approving the terms of reference, you are not approving the ASP per se, or the boundaries of the ASP. That would come through the public engagement, the intermunicipal engagement, and it'd be up to council's final determination as to what they, they chose to include in the ASP. So it's, it's determining the study area in some effect. And I think the, the request by the councillor is to provide some observations and assessment of what that change might be, um, as, as I understand his request and motion.
Deputy Reeve Shul.
Just, uh, further to, uh, help councillor Grotro, it's not only the pressure points, I think, that councillor Grotro is trying to address. It's also all the non-conforming businesses that are within that area. There is many of them, and I, uh, and I do believe that's part of his intent, and, and my intent would be for sure. Uh, but I do have a bit, just a small question here, too. Uh, what would the timeline, uh, I know we have a month possibly delay here, but what would the timeline be extra to include those lands? We, if you don't have, uh, not able to answer that, that is fine, but just kind of approximate. Would there be a, a longer delay, a much longer delay than just moving ahead with the...
Uh, through the Reeve, we, uh, the original scope of, um, the terms of reference for working within the Janet ASP as it stand had a fairly short timeline. That was a fairly discreet set of tasks and amending existing policy, and we would have that done, um, before the end of the year. So by adding new lands that don't have any long-term planning and would require a different set of engagement than we'd originally anticipated, um, and also because two of the sections are within the city of Calgary, um, industrial growth areas, we'd probably have, um, ex- extensive interest from the city of Calgary. And so I think it would potentially extend the timeline, uh, a fair bit to complete the new areas, um, as part of this. Um, and in terms of, um...
That's fine. I know that's a difficult question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Bars.
Um, through the Chair, I think that would be some of the information that we could provide back to council. I think there's not only time, there's cost. You know, is the developer interested in funding an extension that council would be interested in taking on? I think would be a question. Um, there would also be, there could be ramifications for technical studies, stormwater and the CSMI. But those are things that we would bring back to council if you are interested in, in hearing an evaluation of those lands. It'd be a, a cursory evaluation.
The Growth Management Board, um, would there be ramifications over and above the original terms of reference? Or work to do with them, not ramification?
Um, true, or to the Chair. I, either way, this would go to the Growth Management Board for review. Um, you are looking at, as it stands now, an existing area structure plan with clear direction on when and how to proceed to expand it. Um, so how it'd be perceived by the Growth Board, I, I, I'm not going to speculate on that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, councillor Hanson.
Yeah, one line of my questioning was around that, is before we had a pre-approved grandfather ASP, it sounds to me like we might be considering opening up a can of worms, in effect. Um, what, um, what would change if the county plan came 12 months after the developer kicked off an expanded area? Look at, and this Janet ASP in terms of, um, serviceability, CASMI, um, are we trying to put the cart before the horse here, before we fully understand all the different areas that need to grow out and our water and sewer capabilities, et cetera, et cetera? Or are we trying to jump the gun? Um, a little bit would be my, my worry here, um, 'cause we're looking at this as a one-off and not a top-down. I understand the development pressure, I understand the behavior of the people that have been living there. Those are all facts. It would be nice to clean it up, but, um, I wanna make sure that we're doing the best job we can in our planning.
Councillor Wright.
Through the Reeve. So along the vein of CSMI, so what assurances do we have that CMI will actually, a CSMI will actually go ahead? And what does the county do if it has approved ASP amendments that allow development in the Janet Long-Term Development Area on an expectation that CSMI does proceed but doesn't? Do we have a Plan B?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so CMSI, uh, for the most part, in our minds, is moving forward. We have grant money sitting in Rocky View County bank accounts to move it forward into that process. Uh, there's additional grants that we understand from the federal, uh, side of things will be coming towards building CMSI. Uh, Rocky View County has also established a stormwater levy that is collecting to help build CMSI. So for our standpoint, uh, from a lot of our policy documents, for example, this Janet, uh, policy document, as well as the Conrige policy document, rely on CMSI moving forward so that we can actually build the infrastructure to serve a stormwater purpose for those, those growth areas. If we move forward and start amending plans, obviously we'll have to consider those impacts. And a lot of that would be, is and will, changes in area structure plans ultimately change or dramatically require more infrastructure to be built as part of that.
Thank you. So the stormwater levy, though, hasn't been passed, right? So is this one of those things where we just heard earlier that a lot of our debt's based on the fact that we thought we were gonna collect developer levies and haven't? So what, what's the potential impact on that? And furthermore, too, what, and you sort of answered it, but just wanted to get a little bit more clarification, as to what councillor Grotro's amendments would entail. So what I'm, if I'm, pardon me if I don't have this right, but what I'm hearing is that additional lands will create, uh, potentially additional issues that we haven't currently thought of for obvious reasons, right?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So just, um, I, I think I heard correctly, but I wanna make sure. I think you said that our stormwater levy has not been passed, which indeed it has. We do have an existing stormwater levy in place, and that's been in place for a couple of years now. Council is still, uh, waiting to hear amendments to those, uh, proposed changes. Correct. So there is one in place. And then your second question was, what is, or what will be the impacts to our infrastructure plan if we do amend? Uh, and obviously, we'd have to see how far and what are there gonna be the land uses inside the proposed amendments before we decide on what gonna be, what are gonna be the infrastructure deficits.
We'll go to councillor Maciler. And could I, um, ask you to make a motion? We have someone in the audience that would like to speak to council.
Uh, sure. I'll make my comments first, and if that's all right, then prior to making that motion. Um, you know, what I'm, I think it's always great when we can look at the confines of the area structure plan and just sort of do what is being asked of today, or not do what's being asked today, and just deal with that. And what the area councillor's asking for here is, is a month worth of information and just with some specific questions. It doesn't mean that we're opening up the area structure plan. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that we're, we, you know, it doesn't really mean anything other than let's get a little more information and, again, decide, um, decide at that point. And so, um, with regards to Mr. Grotro's motion, I'll actually be, um, supporting it. I, I, but I want a tight timeline on it, for sure. And I think he's only asked for a month. Um, so that said, I will make the motion to allow...
Uh, Mr. Chair, sorry. If I may, we already have a motion on the floor, so technically we can't have a second motion.
You're right. Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah. So, so I won't make that motion. I take all that back, and I will just carry on.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, well, I'm gonna jump in here. I, I see this as being just a tad premature. Uh, I, I think, I, and I do understand the need for that extra area, I really do. But I, I don't think, uh, as targeted reviews are coming, and a comprehensive review is coming of our municipal development plan, that this area will be included then. And that's the proper time. And, and we have an existing area structure plan, um, that is there and approved and waiting for development. We have developer interest in that, and they're going to fund this. And I think that this complicates, uh, that quite a bit. So I won't be supporting that motion. I think that there's a time and a place for this, and I fully support that this area needs something, uh, whether it be an interim, uh, land use or down the road or whatever. But, uh, it does need something, but I, I won't support that today. Um, we see, and I still don't have that side of the screen telling me who's preempting. It is councillor Hanson. So before you close, can I get councillor Hanson?
Maybe along the lines of, um, efficiency, but if we expand it at a later date, question through the Reeve to administration, what work would be wasted, or what cool concepts would we be missing for that East Janet because we weren't thinking on a bigger scale when we did the designs for, uh, the existing parcel without the additional, um, four sections?
As you say, fools, jump in. I think, I think the one, perhaps, thing that comes to mind is you may be doing some duplication of technical data. I'm not sure of the degree that we need to look at. I know CSMI is considered this area. You, you may have to repeat some of that, but, you know, we have in the past expanded area structure plans, Balzac East is a good example. You, you analyze those areas, you fit them into your existing technical documents, and you move forward. So, you know, either way, um, you can accommodate ex- expansions of ASP, either now or, or in the future.
Okay. I was thinking more along the lines of some cool new kind of campus or something that maybe needs a little more elbow room than what we have in East Janet. Um, are we shutting down any creativity, um, for growing our, uh, commercial tax base by limiting, at an early stage, um, the scope of this study? I'm hearing no.
Uh, I'm through, Chair. I, I think I'd be just speculating, uh, on answering that question.
Okay. We'll leave the speculation to the development crowd. Thank you.
I need a little bit of guidance here. We do have someone, and I, it's my fault that I should've asked for a motion to hear from the member of the audience that'd like to speak. So if, if, with your approval, would you rescind or pull your motion? We can deal with that motion. And if the gentleman still wishes to spare, or the person still wishes to speak, they can come forward. And if not, we'll go back to your motion.
Yeah. Um, it's a D item. I'm not sure, really, if this is a place for public to speak. Uh, I mean, if, if I, if I kinda just, and, and I can kinda just finish maybe my thought process on, on the motion first, Mr. Chair. Um, and I, and I appreciate everybody's comment, uh, my colleagues here. And, and I just wanna make it clear, it's not that I, I want to add, I, I, I'm gonna back up. It's not that I'm saying that we can add all these properties, or these sections. I think what it is, is I just wanna explore. I'm asking for a month to see if our administration... if our administration can explore the possibility and what the ramifications may be. So I'm just looking for some more information. And maybe the answer is no. You know, and if they bring it back to us on May 28th and the answer is no, I mean, I'm more than happy to have a discussion on the terms of reference of the Janet ASP. I'm just looking at to see what maybe, if it's even possible, Mr. Chair, to see if this can even come forth to a fruition. I'm not sure if it can. I'm just asking for a month to have it, to explore it. And if not, I mean, I'm more than happy on May 28th if staff comes back and says absolutely it cannot be done at this particular time. I'm more than happy to put the terms of reference forward. So you know, I kind of leave it in your hands. I mean, I can rescind this and have them speak, but that's just kind of my thought process.
Yep. Well, if, if you make the motion to pull the, pull the motion, withdraw the motion. Fine. If not, then we'll have to carry on. I'll call the question.
Point of order, I believe we're taught that you do not have to ask jury. It's not his to rescind its councils. So you just make the motion.
Yeah, that's true. Good point. I'll, I'll side with you. So is that a motion?
A move that we rescind D3, or not rescind, um, 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 withdraw. Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Recorded vote?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Opposed. In favor?
Okay, that fails. So now. We got lots going. Yeah? No, you have to remove it because we withdrew it. Didn't we withdraw it? Oh, no, it failed. Yeah, it's lunchtime. Okay. Okay, the motion on D3, all in favor. And we'll have a recorded vote. Counselor Kissel?
Opposed. Opposed.
In favor?
In favor. Opposed?
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And that is carried. So we'll see you back in a month. If we could just get some patience here on council's behalf and we'll get Mr. Smith to do D2 and then we'll take our lunch break.
To the Reeves, thank you. And good afternoon now. This is really a housekeeping item as required under the Forest and Prairie Protection Act, as well as our fire services bylaw. The annual appointment of fire guardians for Rockview County is required. The purpose of this is so that we can have people write fire permits throughout the county. We utilize our own fire staff to do this. Some of our contractors do it as well. You'll see their names in it, in the attachment. And, and as well as we have a number of fire guardians at large out there that write permits for us. I'll take your questions.
Thank you. Could I get a motion? Counselor Hanson?
To make a motion that the individuals listed in the attachment A be appointed as local fire guardians for the 2019 fire season as per the Forest and Prairie Protection Act.
Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. We will break till 1:30. We will break till 1:30.